One, I'd call to order the village trustee workshop for October 28th. First on the agenda, review tree ordinance with tree advisory committee.
Do you want us to leave this discussion or do you want to discuss it?
Yes, how about you guys?
I have, I have, just FYI, I have six, six questions that, from our discussion last time, that need attention and you guys to decide basically, and then maybe you have more after having thought about it a little bit more.
Are we discussing version five or six?
Version five. Version six is not a version, it was misnamed a version. That is for your information, it is the notes of the village attorney, Michael Boyer, who's here. It's his notes on the draft that we, version five, that we've handed into you for your information and consideration. And it's something that you should consider tonight if you would like to. So we're all working from draft five, version five, which is the version that we need to tweak, sort of, and adjust and decide on today.
Sure, would you like to?
Sure, okay. Do I have to stand up or, I guess I will? So, basically this ordinance, when we're talking about it, is sort of the document that will tell us, I mean, you guys, village staff, the public, the tree committee, eventual tree committee people, how this is gonna work. Who has the authority, where the authority rests, who has the duty to do all the legwork for no pay, and who makes the final decisions and sort of how it works year to year. So we have that, that's mostly packed into section 122 dash four of the proposed ordinance, which lays out the tree commission, its composition, its duties, its responsibilities, its annual responsibilities, the tree nursery work, education work, and protection of, the next section goes on to be sort of protecting public tree health. So, there are basically, the areas that we, that you guys asked about before and that the attorney brought up, were, one, the name of the commission. I think Mike was wanting to talk about the name of the commission, so he could talk about it tonight. I would like to suggest that, I think tree commission is fine, I just put it in there because that's what most municipalities call it. We've concluded affirmatively that it doesn't matter, the naming convention doesn't imply any specific kind of authority, whether we call it commission, a board, a committee. If you don't like tree commission, I would suggest tree advisory board, because that's exactly what it is. It's an advisory board to the village board. I would suggest that we don't call it any kind of committee, because it would be confused with the current tree committee that has drafted this for you. And the current tree committee is not going to be the five-person committee eventually. So I thought tree advisory board or tree advisory something would be appropriate, that's my opinion. So, the second question for you guys is the composition of the committee, 122 dash four, section A. Basically, I had a little note in there, I, meaning the tree committee, had a note in there saying, we couldn't really come to a consensus on this issue, whether you would like to allow one or more persons that are not residents of the village to be on the standing tree board, tree commission, whatever. I'm gonna call it a tree commission for now until you decide. If that outside, non-village resident is a licensed arborist. So the idea being, it would expand the, sort of, in the hopes that we'd get professionals to donate their work for free by being on the commission. So that's question two that needs to be answered. Section three, I had a note in the version that you have, version five, about sidewalk work, and it's sort of coordinating sidewalk work for the tree health. And I talked to Eddie about this section on September 4th. He was fine with the section. His main worries were, he doesn't want it to slow down their work, which should be a consideration when drafting the language of that section. I think that the language as it stands is fine, he was fine with it. If there's emergency work, emergency water work, emergency sidewalk work, that doesn't allow time for the tree board to get involved, then fine. But this is in other cases where there's time for planning. The, let's see. The fourth and fifth areas were if you guys want to discuss Mike LaGore's comments, which were provided to you as version six, but they're, again, just his comments. He had a couple, including what to do if there's a driveway made that takes out a couple of public trees. What do we do? Do you find them, do you okay it, do you ask them to replace it? And the second note he had at the very end on the last page was, you can read it, but something like, the fines or the cost of enforcement for mutilating or killing public trees should cover the village, which is behind, basically, in his opinion. You can, you can just jump in here, sorry.
Oh yeah.
I'm elegantly summarizing this, but these, that last note should be considered by you guys tonight. And that was it that I have for. So those are six questions, and I don't know if any of you have more, but you could just go through those six and then we'd have a draft, or you can add more questions for discussion.
Thank you.
I have a question on H on the first page. Establishing tree management budget, what do you feel is inappropriate budget?
$100 billion, can you get that for us please, Kathy?
How about a starter budget?
The budget as it is now is, at least, and I think I speak for the tree committee, our intention was to work with the budget as it is now and to augment the budget with grants. So basically, as much as possible that we can add with outside funding, the better. I mean, there's a lot of pruning work, just maintenance pruning work that needs to be done, let alone beautification projects that are more fun. So, I don't have a number for you, it would sort of depend on, you know, year to year, what funds, outside funds could be gotten, basically.
So, is version six prepared by the request of the tree committee or does it?
No.
No.
Version six is the village council's comments on the draft that was proposed.
We understood that that would probably happen. I mean, Mike, just to let you guys know in the background of Mike's help, thank you so much for your help on this, it's been really helpful. He drafted the first version of this, all the, because it's all legal language and gave it to us. And then for many months, you know, the 11 members of the tree committee have been tirelessly working to sort of tweak it and make it more appropriate to specific issues in our village. And sort of add things that other similarly sized villages have thought of. And we interviewed other chairman of tree commissions in Rhinebeck and other places, and they had tips and concerns that they suggested would be a good idea to add to or have in an ordinance, problems that they ran into, et cetera. So we really did a lot of research to augment Mike's starting point. And then when we all voted on version five to sort of get this version off our table and give it to you, it was the understanding that Mike would then provide you, I'm assuming, this is, correct me if I'm wrong Stephanie, that Mike would provide you his final comments on our sort of tweaked versions, since we're all laypeople. So his, that's the final sort of legal opinion on what we wrote.
And then I guess my only other question was the name.
Well, that's question one, so go for it.
I mean, I think that a volunteer tree committee, if you stay with that name, it's continuity between what, the work you've done to where you're going. I do think that a commission or a board is confusing, because we have a zoning board and HDRB, the RECC commission that have implied authority by using those terms. So I mean, if it's just a question of semantics, I'd be preferable to leaving it as a committee. Just my thoughts on it.
Okay. My, and other members of the tree committee present, please jump in, I don't want to be the only one speaking. But my concern is that it's confusing, because there's, trust me, there's like a ton of, as you well know, a ton of confusion about this work. And this 11-person committee is not the same members, people, does not have the same sort of duties that this new permanent tree board commission committee will have. And so it, as a point of confusion, I think it's better to, to name it something else besides the committee, could be volunteer, blah, blah, blah. That's fine with me, but.
Volunteer tree group?
Also, to, to, it has different, it doesn't have any authority, it's an advisory board. It's only advisory, the authority remains with trustees. So advisory would be, seems like a good thing to have in the title, just because it says what it does.
I've had preliminary discussions with people at NYCOM about what is a commission or a committee or a board. Like you said, it's all spelled out in the law itself, what the authority is that goes along with that terminology. But, I mean, I don't see anything more clearer than volunteer tree committee. It seems like it's, to me, at least, I've.
I think it's got a little bit, well, from a legal perspective, I believe that the name does matter, as to what it is, you know? And, and I, really the question for the board is, do you want to create another part of government, because that's what you're doing, okay?
And that's also a line that I, I want to tread very lightly on.
You know, because if, if you're not willing to do that, then, then no purpose having a discussion over the name.
So if we were to name it a board or a commission, then we would be in fact making another arm of government?
Yeah, you're creating a legal entity of the village of culturing, a very limited one.
If it remains as a committee, not?
No, you know, the, the difference between, you could draw it up in, in, in similar aspects, but, but the board has authority to make recommendations to your board, okay? And that's more, and it's got functions that are greater than, than just that, which include the, the operation and care of the tree nursery, that's gonna require it to be able to make decisions where a committee would have to bring every single aspect to you, that aspect would be under their jurisdiction. And that's something that you want to give them the authority to do and not have to worry about a committee meeting every single time something needs to be done on, a decision needs to be made with that particular aspect. So, you know, it, I think it's more nuanced than, than just calling it a committee, so.
Mike, will the, will the limited legal authority they have enable them to write their own grant applications as opposed to the board?
Well, we'd be giving them that authority here.
Now, as with other, other boards, for instance, the special board, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the, the special board has in the past prepared grant applications, but the village board has executed the application. The application is, is submitted by the village, but it has been prepared by the, prepared by, in this case, the special board.
By that board.
So in this case, are, are we saying that the tree advisory board, or tree commission, or tree, whatever this body is gonna be called, would be authorized to not just prepare, but execute an application on behalf of the village? Or would that be, would their role be similar to a special board? Or in, in the case of the HDRB, the HDRB applied for a shipa grant, but they came to the village board and the village board approved it and executed the application?
I think they would all have to come to this.
Yeah, they, every board does have to, the mayor has to, or the mayor is delegate.
So there's no difference here, this isn't, this isn't a situation where the, this board is being given unfettered authority to go seek monies and represent that the village wants to apply without the village boards.
I guess the distinction I'm really trying to make between a committee and then the, let's call it the tree advisory board for, for, for purposes of, of tonight.
Let's just call it peeps, tree advisory peeps.
And that's the, what I'm trying to get to, is that if it's gonna create too much, why not just stay with a tree?
Why not just stay with?
For whom is it creating, I, I guess I'm not sure.
No, it's all respect, I'm just saying, it doesn't matter.
It takes, I, I think it would take a lot of the political charge out of it and just, we could get to work on the trees.
This is what I don't understand, and I, I take you at your word, that there, that there, there's like political charge around this, but. It's insane, it's like, I, I've talked to everybody, all of you individually, like, I know that you think that, in general, you would like to have a bunch of other people do a bunch of legwork for you and then come ask you for permission and beg you, please, can you just approve this so we can go off and do our busy work more and beautify the village? Like, it's a great idea. So, I don't think that naming it one thing or the other, I think the political stuff is just gonna die down as soon as you get a good ordinance passed and people start seeing what we're gonna do, it's gonna be pretty awesome. So, I, I don't, I don't really care that much what it's named, but I don't like the idea of, basically, your, your idea is to just take the appearance of, take any teeth out of this, we don't want this to be more government or whatever. But, but the truth is, it's an addition, it's a very nice addition to village government, it's a nice addition, it's a free addition, it doesn't raise taxpayer dollars, it's the way that government should work, in my opinion. And I don't think that we need to take the teeth out of it by naming it something man be pam be, not that that is necessarily.
But if it does become a part of village government instead of just the tree committee, what's to prevent it from seeking more funding and impacting taxpayers?
Well, what's.
You guys.
Yeah, you, you guys are the authority, it's just an advisory board, it's just giving advice about the sad tree that's dying and what's causing it to die and.
I mean, up until this evening, I was under the impression that we were just kind of debating semantics, but you're telling me that it is a legal difference between the two, or three different words.
Look, if, if you're on a committee and, you know, let's say you have a committee of seven people and only four show up, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, and there's no authority for anybody to do anything about it, then, you know, what's the point? There's a, there's a little bit more to this, because it, it, it has the functions of, or the, it has that particular type of authority where, where there's, there's requirements for meetings, there's, again, you know, it doesn't have anything, there's nothing in it that, that regulates anything that's private. It's, it's here particular, with a particular purpose to deal with public trees. And, so in a sense, it's not the planning board, you're not gonna have a private person coming before the, you know, let's say the tree board for permission to come do something. It's, it's gonna be more in the nature of your other aspects of village government coming to the tree board and the tree board advising the board of trustees and the highway department as to what it should be doing. Because currently, I mean, you're, you're, you have Ed in the highway department and maybe a few other people who have experience in, in dealing with trees from working in the highway department, but may not have a particular expertise that, that these people can go out and get on your behalf and then bring to the village. So, there, there's that aspect, and then I go back to the, to the tree nursery aspect, because that's, that's more than, than something a committee would just go take care of. There's, there's responsibility that's there. So, I, I do believe, from a legal perspective, there is a difference. What we've delegated to that board or what is proposed to be delegated, maybe not be, may not be that more extensive to what you delegate to a committee, but in my mind, it does cross, it crosses over from, from committee to something greater. And that's why I think the title, I agree with Jen about how the title should be, I think it should reflect it, but that comes with the recognition by your board that.
That's awesome, that's an awesome idea, like.
It's a new board that you're creating, that it's a new part of your government that you didn't have before.
And can I just mention that a ton, it's not any weird newfangled thing, like a ton, a ton of villages like ours that are sort of hoping to have a lot of tourists come and trying to make, I mean, trees are such a big part of why people like to walk on the street here.
Why they come hike here.
I mean, it grows.
I was actually getting my marriage license in the city of Great Barrington, and I was in the clerk's office, and they have a tree committee in their mailbox there. And that's what it dawned on me, is why are we talking about a commission or a board, a, a committee? If you go to Main Street, USA, they say a committee is more than sufficient to.
You know, Mike, it depends what they do in Massachusetts. I'll tell you this.
People's Republic?
Because it's even different in, in Connecticut, how they, you know, describe their boards. And the committees may have the same authority. It, it, it depends on what's delegated in, in the document. And if we did a side by side, we might see nothing, we might see the difference.
What's gonna happen, the current 11 members that are, are they?
See, even the mayor is confused about this.
No, no, going, no, going.
No, the current 11 committee members are wonderful and dedicated and may or may not wish to, to throw their name in the hat for you, for your consideration. But you're gonna appoint five people to be on the board commission committee, blah, 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 awesome thing.
Yeah.
Awesome thing, just call it the awesome thing.
And it might be me, it might be Tony, it might be Donald, but it, it might be other people that are out there. Hopefully, we'll be an arborist or two, but, you know.
What's, what's ironic to me is I, I don't really, I don't get, both arguments almost don't make sense to me, why you care that it's not committee and, and, and the implication when in the law, in the law states what their, what their authorities are. And again, I mean, it's, it's irrelevant, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're 20 minutes talking, talking about a name and it's not gonna end. And there's only four, four of us, so I, I don't think a phone is gonna do us any good. So, why don't we take question number one and either take it up later or, or another time and move on? Because I mean, this is just, I, I just, I'm not, I don't know the answer to the problem, and I, I, there's value in both sides. I just don't know how to get to the happy medium, and right now, I don't think we're coming.
So are, are we hung up on the use of the word board, is that what you, you have an issue with?
Board, commission, committee, I mean.
And Kathy, you feel the same way, is that what you mean, that you're gonna vote two to two on this issue?
You don't want to.
I don't know that.
I know, I know in favor of it, it's a volunteer tree committee.
But you don't want the use of the word board?
Board or commission, because as Mike describes it, brings it to another plateau.
But adding advisory committee, I mean, that doesn't, does that satisfy, that doesn't, I mean, I just.
Well, I mean, does anyone else want to speak up here?
Well, it, it. You know, there's a certain amount of mistrust from, from beginning of this, and I gotta say, this committee has put a lot of work in, and I think it's well-guided in the right direction, everything else. But I remember a time in this village when we wanted to do something, people didn't need accolades or titles or things in that direction. They turned around, they got on their tractor, they cut through a rake and that, and they showed up, and they built Mayor's Park, they built the Todd's Park, or they, or they dug the holes for the nursery and, and just did it without any accolades. And then all of a sudden, people started forming committees, and they were told to be on a committee. And they said, oh, great, oh, and you are on the committee, great, and what are we gonna do? We're going to grow nursery product for the village at the expense, so the village can save some money. And you know what's happened is, I've seen this thing, the few times I've been here, I've seen the demeanor change. And you're right, it has gotten political to a certain extent. And it's gotten political because things were done and they were just done. And you know what, sometimes you need to do that, but other times you need to, if you might take the bull by the horns and do something, you've gotta bring the whole community and offer the whole thing to the whole entire community and say, hey, we're meeting, we're putting trees in on Main Street, or we're allowing somebody to put X on Main Street, or we're going to turn around and put, we're gonna be digging holes this weekend and we're all getting together. That's the way the Todd Park got built, it wasn't done by a committee or, or anything else. And then I watched the village attorney from the last time I was here with, I don't know how many drafts you guys have had, and I've been trying to keep up on it, and then I show up and meet a couple of meetings and I'd be reading something, I'd be told, oh, that's the draft. I don't know where I stand on the issue, I, I'm sure you've gone much farther than, than I've even read with what I've got in my hand now. But I, you'd find things, I find curious, now, I work, I work, I work actually handling one of the largest arborist insurance programs and, you know, contracts and legal things when I look at, but when I hear all of a sudden arbitrarily the word committee being moved over to commission and then commissioned to board, to me, there looks like there's implied authority. And I don't think this village needs another layer of government, I think you've got a fine board that can make decisions based from an advisory committee going forward. You know, I don't think we need the accolades, and I think when we go to do something in here, we should put an announcement and whatever communications are, and everybody shows up with a shovel, you know, to put something in. And, and gets together.
Can I respond to you for a second?
Please?
I, I completely respect that opinion, but can I say that the beginning of this effort, this current effort, there's been other tree efforts before in the village, organized tree efforts, more like along the lines of what you say. The beginning of this effort had a few older people sitting in my living room, I think, who were expressing extreme burnout and extreme sort of, I don't know what, how you want to qualify her, their expressions, but it was basically, I've done this volunteer work thanklessly for all these years, you know, these people may have worked with you.
And I know who they are.
And I don't feel like we're any further than where we started. And we, that's the moment, actually, when we were looking into the history of this village, when we realized, geez, we need to organize this. We need to have something in place that has a sort of a history that will go 50 years from now, there will be a whole file with all of this information that we've gleaned and collected that will be passed on to the next person after I'm done with this effort or, or someone else is done with this effort, so that that knowledge can be passed on. The, what you describe is very much a part of this effort, getting the shovels out. I mean, if you've seen me on Main Street and a lot of other people in this room.
That's not what's happening.
It's, this is what, this is, what I'm saying respectfully is I disagree with you, part of the problem is this, this work is not organized. And I think if you ask the majority of the village, they're gonna agree with me, just look at the tree scape. It's not organized, there's trees that were planted that are dying early because they weren't maintained correctly. And I'm just, I'm trying, we are all trying to sort of make it just a little bit more organized.
Your efforts aren't being, you know, and I shouldn't be directing to you, but I, the, the efforts aren't misdirected, okay? It's the process in getting it, and that's all I'm saying. It doesn't need to be done the way it is, it seems that there's a select few that have been allowed to be involved and there's been a select few that, and, you know, you may disagree because you don't, you, okay, and you can do that, but you have not, you've not maybe witnessed the beginning developments of a lot of the things that were going on here. And I, and I'm really concerned about a second layer of government. I don't think that we need to accomplish what you're looking to do, all we need is good people who are willing to get their fingers dirty. I'm one of them, I mean, I, my family itself, we've, we spend in excess of almost $12,000 keeping, maintaining one tree in the village historically with our family until its, its ultimate demise. So, you know, there's a passion for, for the tree scape here in the village. And, you know, I've been here basically most of my life, and that's what makes this village beautiful. But turning around, putting another layer of government here, okay? And, and as your attorney will advise you, with the two definitions that you have, I'm personally concerned that, that basically you're giving implied authority on certain issues where I don't think it should, think it should ultimately, our village is small enough where it can ultimately rest with the village board.
It does, but that's not, I think that you're, you're misunderstanding, it does rest with the village board, authority does rest with the village board.
What we have here is we have the document, okay? Which is superseding a document that the village has had been operating for how many years? You've got things in here talking about, you know, taking down trees on people's.
And if you turn to section 122 dash four, it says, authority of the commission, the tree commission is an advisory body only to the village board.
That's not what I'm referring, that's not what I'm.
That's all it says, it's advisory.
And that's not what I'm talking about.
We can respectfully disagree about layers of government, but can, can you just finish your comments so that we can continue? But that's all I'm saying.
Well, seems to me the world Gordon is talking about is, everybody gets picked up their shovel and they're gonna come to the mayor and then say, well, I think on that maple we should do this, no, I think we should do this. No, I spent $12,000 on my maple and I think we should do that. And what this is saying, Michael, is that the village board is appointing a group that they would listen to about trees.
And that's exactly what you're.
And that's all it's doing.
And my only point, and my only point is why can't.
Oh, you're absolutely right. But Gordon, that's what you're talking about, you're talking about, no, you're absolutely right.
Can, basically.
Guys, guys, please.
But that's what the committee is supposed to do.
And that's what this is about.
Well, you know, so, so, okay.
You're right, you're talking in circles.
Guys, guys, please.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if it's just, if, if naming it an advisory committee without changing the law.
There's no difference, there's no difference.
That's what I want to see, Mike is saying, is there any difference, Mike, in the two?
Whatever.
Exactly, and this is where we're.
What Michael was saying was that, I think what you were kind of saying, and I don't think you intended it, but when you look at what's, what the law is talking about, when you look at what the trees are to the village, calling it a committee is a little bit, and I don't say you're saying this, but it seems a little bit belittling. And I think that's where, that's the issue.
Well, and again, and, and that's why, that is the issue, because to the hard workers, it's belittling. To the, to the village board and those that are, are skeptical of government, it is maybe the right thing, because for us, we're saying, look, we're not creating a legislative government, even though it's. even though it's belittling to you, it it's still, it it seems to to serve the same purpose.
Okay with me.
Um, and again, for me, I I'm completely careless what you're calling, and and, you know, this is more 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 aggravating and crushing than anything, but i- it's, it's, the intent for me is not to belittle and at the same time not to let the implication of more government take over or or become, I guess, what it is in political football as usual. So, I mean, for me, it would be easier just to call it a committee and move on, but I don't, I'm not looking to belittle because, you know, what the document states is what it's gonna do anyway.
Michael, um, if we call it the tree advisory committee, um, does that, uh, does that undermine the the authority or the to the, to the extent that it has any, um, the advisory authority and the capacity of the, of the end performance of the group?
I I I think the 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 language of the document is clear, I do stand by, it it is my belief, and and look, I just tell you what I think, that that's my job, right? It's to give you advice, you don't have to, either way, nobody has to take my advice, you just get my opinion, you decide to do whatever you want, you all, you know.
We do all the time.
You do, right. But I am of the 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 opinion that that it really is just one, even though what what's defined in here is is very clear, right? And and it's not, I'm not trying to create something that's greater than what it really is, I I I just happen to agree based on all of the other codes that I've looked at and and the enabling legislation for the government to, for the village to enact something like this. Uh, I've looked at the D E C regulations, I've looked at, you know, a whole bunch of other areas where we could garner advice from. And certainly, you, we can call it an advisory committee if you want to, I feel it's more appropriately to be named either a board or a commission, but that's okay, because what's in one twenty-two dash four is what is going to to regulate what goes on. So if no one has an issue about one twenty-two dash four A through I, or A through L, then then you guys can decide to call it whatever you want.
And can I just say that you you need to decide, like, just decide, take a vote amongst yourselves, I I don't, it doesn't, to be honest, it doesn't, it's not like a Jesus, I'm just gonna quit if you call it this, but but the the idea is, we need to just decide these little things so that it can go on to a public hearing and you guys can vote on this and we can start our work, which is the reason that all of us started this in the first place.
So, so that's agreed, call it tree advisory committee and go to the next team.
Have one last question and and one more statement, I'd like to make, and I, I don't want my statements to take away from what this committee has done and the group of people it's put together. As I said before, what they're looking to do is, this is what needs to be done to a certain degree. I I just had some questions in in the implied authority, what's going on here, and I don't want this to be divisive at all to this village. I got one question though, though, and I wanna know, was it the committee that was, who charged the committee to develop this? Okay, was it the majority of the board, it was the majority of the board?
The village board, the village board. Yeah.
That's, that was just a question.
Last year.
Last, last year, yeah, and that's on the village website, you can read the resolution that formed the committee.
I got you. I got this.
I've got a, I've got a two-part question, um, one, so Mr. Legore, what, can you define what is the village right-of-way?
The village right-of-way?
Yes.
As opposed to some other?
There's words in here that says the village right-of-way, I'd like to have it defined, please.
What part are we talking about?
Where where are you looking, Arenas?
I'm just asking.
Where are you looking in the document that you see it's written so we can all enjoy, read along, okay?
Yeah, public tree definition. Page two.
So, roads are laid out in a number of different ways. The um, the the first way and and the way that that I would say, um, many people are are familiar with are load, uh, roads that are laid out on a, on a map. So, uh, let's say a traditional subdivision map. And in in a traditional subdivision, you would have a, a um, a road that is laid out that is three rods in width, which is forty-nine and three quarters somewhat feet, let's call it fifty feet. And and most people would generally recognize with a fifty-foot right-of-way.
From where?
From, well, as laid out on a map. Let's say you were in a, in just a a cookie cutter subdivision, anywhere in New York, okay? You walk down a subdivision street and it's a, it's a town or village road, okay? You are walking on the paved area of a right-of-way. So if you, if it had a yellow line down the middle, you would take twenty-five feet from each side of the the yellow line. Twelve and a half would be paved, the other twelve and a half would not be paved. Many people believe that they own up into the, up to the curb, but then they get a survey of their property and they realize they they own a distance twelve and a half feet from that curb. That's because of of how a subdivision map operates. In this particular village, which was developed way before the concept of a subdivision map, there was certainly mapping, but um, before that concept was ever enacted by any legislature. Um, your right-of-ways have become curb to curb, other than those areas in the village where where the sidewalks are owned by the village. Um, I haven't seen maps of every single street of the village, uh, you you know, and I I actually haven't seen, you know, formal maps of Main Street, but I I do understand that that um, many of the sidewalks on Main Street are owned by the village. So it's going to be the distance between your property line to the property line across the street. And that would would generally be the right-of-way. It wouldn't be any any greater than that and it would be limited depending on where your lines are. So if your tree is on your property and there is a distance between your property and the street here in the village, then that typically would be considered the right-of-way. So it's gonna depend on on where you are, but I know from our our discussions on signage and the state the state owns from curb to curb, so their right-of-way doesn't extend any further than that, which is what my understanding is. I've actually requested, I I could be wrong, I'm just telling you what my understanding is, I haven't seen the maps, I've actually called Poughkeepsie Foyle to get copies of the map so that I could have them in my possession, so we could solve some of these questions that come up from time to time. Uh, but that is generally what the right-of-way is, it it does not extend, you know, provided you have a pro, you know, a survey of your property, which is always gonna be the the clearest definition of where your boundaries are. Does not extend into private property, it just doesn't work that way.
But you're defining curb to curb, a lot of these streets don't have curbs, a lot of them are private roads, how does that apply? A lot of these roads are not double-lent, double-lent.
If they're not, i- that doesn't, if if it's a private road, it's not part of a village right-of-way, there is no right-of-way.
So let's take it a road, there are several roads that are not private, they're village-owned, do not have sidewalks. And you can barely get one car in, their cars parked.
So those roads, to the extent that we had surveys out of those properties in front of us, I I suspect that the surveys would indicate that those property boundaries go up to the curb. I could be wrong, I'm just telling you what I, what what would be, what I would reasonably expect to see.
Right, so my suggestion before producing a document that doesn't address those issues, I think some of those things should be addressed.
Yeah, but if there is no right-of-way, then it it really isn't an issue.
How is it not a right-of-way?
Because.
You just said it was.
No, 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 I'm, there isn't always a right-of-way.
Is there one right-of-way?
No, no, the.
Like you're saying, there isn't always, chances are in the village, there's probably one.
It could be paved in its entirety, from curb to curb, that 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 point I I get, but but I don't think there's really any confusion about about what the right-of-way is. If if the village owns the street in that particular instance and does not own any any further past the street, it cannot have a right-of-way that extends any further than that, it's it's a, it it's not a possibility.
So so a road that's fifteen, eighteen feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
You said it goes three rods, which is forty-nine feet.
That's if it's laid out on a subdivision map, that's a a very, that's a developed road.
Okay, I live in Underclip Hill. Let's assume that it that it is done that, what does that mean to me?
That means.
The road is eighteen feet wide.
Okay, but you you're laid out on a traditional subdivision plat.
It's not a private road, you know, it's not a private road.
No, it's under, it's under Clip Hill.
Oh, all right. Well, then, there is no, you have a private road.
My concern isn't just for me, it's for the for the residents as well, for those that aren't here.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, but I'm trying to answer your question, all right.
I I think if, I think if you just specify that basically he's talking about his village-owned property, correct?
Correct.
No more, no less.
No more, no less.
Okay.
No, it's it's actually very confusing, uh, I'm Carolyn Bishan, I'm on the Historic District Review Board. And we had an applicant come to us last year who found out that half of her front porch was really village property. And there, and there's an applicant who came to us in the past year who found out that in order to put a dining area here on Main Street in front of his property, that was actually village property also, it certainly was way far back from the, uh, what you would consider the traditional sidewalk or the curb. I think you're familiar with that instance, it's a silver spoon, you know, and and so he had to acquire that property in order to put a dining area outside. You know, and it's, it's all over the map in the village and unless you're going to look at every survey that's ever been done in the village and and title policies included, I mean, because some, you know, some, some might be exceptions from title. You don't know really where the village right-of-way is.
Well, then, but at at the end of the day, right, the highway department operates, right? It functions, the village board functions, people get surveys of their properties to understand their boundaries. I I guess the confusion I have is is what the overall concern is, is it, is it the fact that people find out through the fact that a tree committee was formed that they don't own a certain particular piece of property, or do you, do you?
You know what, no, I thi- I think the only concern is people maybe thinking, you know, about this committee probably being able to i- intrude onto their own property.
I'll give you a perfect example, it happened this week, tree fell down, person liked their tree till it fell down. Then they call and say, you need to come clean up our tree. And we say, and this is the exact conversation, said, Mary, call the homeowner, cause it was, had to be a good ten, twelve feet off the road, I said, tell the homeowner that we're not cleaning up until he proves it's our tree. Well, Joe homeowner comes down with a survey in hand and says, that's your tree. End of story, the survey tells you, so as far as we're concerned, we were near the right-of-way, we wanted nothing to do with that tree, that was your tree, you take care of it, we want nothing to do with it, cause it's far off the road, well, unfortunately, because, unfortunately for us, that is dead, it's our problem because the private, the the public right-of-way went that far, but while it was living, too bad for us, don't touch my tree. So I think, you know, the the, you know, as as I live on a private road, as Arenas, there's no public right-of-way, they're my trees. And the same as the porches and anything else, unfortunately, what happens is that the public right, when you bought your house, the survey tells you where the pla, where the right-of-way starts and ends, and if the tree is in or out, unfortunately, like everything else, we find out after the fact, that's where it is. So I I think, you know, the, it's very, it's a val- valid question and valid concern, but I I think what the reality is, is it doesn't matter what you think about this document, the village right-of-way is what it is no matter what, whether you're talking about a porch or tree, a rock, a curb, you know, so, you know, i- to be concerned is 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 of great value, but the reality is, is that there are streets where we own, front wall to front wall, you know?
I got a question about the right-of-way thing, with utilities, utilities have right-of-ways on so so far away from their wires, which a lot of times ends up in someone's front yard. Now, is the right-of-way you're talking about the same as the utility right-of-way?
No, that that's, that's a, a benefit unto the utility company.
That's a whole other. Cause they can come and cut trees on someone's front yard and destroy them.
They.
And then they do that in in the village, okay, I'm just saying, is it like, the right-of-way you're saying, is it like fifty feet from the center line of the road you decide? Or it's, when when your property line ends to the next guy's property, that is the right-of-way we're discussing here?
All right, so.
Not a trip, Mike.
Yeah, no, 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 it it's, it's, uh.
I'm not trying to stump Mike.
No. So, um, um, I just wanna segregate out utility company rights-of-ways from from street rights-of-ways, okay? Those terms get used, rights-of-ways and easements get get in, you know, used interchangeably when it comes to utility companies.
Right.
Um, when the utility company comes onto private property, you will generally find a recorded easement. There that you, you'll you'll find that one-page utility easements, they're very old many times because the utility lines have been around for a long time. It's those documents that give the utility company the the authority to come onto your property and do work.
But they destroyed a tree in front of my house that was clearly on my property.
Well, I suspect that because you have a utility connection, that there is an easement, if you pull your title policy, you should find an easement there for that. Um, they're pretty good about taking care of that and when when, uh, and they usually do it at hookup. I I I know on the the projects I've worked on over the last few years, well, you know, last twelve, fourteen years, we have those easements in place when we file our maps, obviously, the village developed, you know, a lot longer than that, but.
They're responsible for ninety feet of wire to the first pole, they're responsible to keep that clear and maintained for the service wire coming in the house. I'm talking about trees that are adjacent to the road near the wires.
Well, if.
I I, basically, I just wanna know what, how much authority this has.
Well.
Does it have the same, does it have the same authority that the, uh, utility company has?
No, 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 no.
The neighbor says, I don't like that tree, and goes to the tree commission and says, we don't want this tree here.
We, th- this board. Yeah, that that's not the, so the first job of 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 the board or the advisory committee is to generate the the, a tree management plan, which is basically your comprehensive plan for the health of your trees.
Well, I'm familiar with all that, I'm just concerned about the right-of-way thing.
Yeah, but but let me, let me. No, no, I get it, I get it, but but that's, it's the lead-in.
I don't know about the committee stuff, right?
It's it's the lead-in to your question, because if you know all that, then then you know that the answer to your question is, is that they can't come onto your property. They can't use, they can't piggyback utility easement to cut down one of your trees.
They, meaning village, or the committee, can't do anything.
The village. Right, the committee isn't gonna come out and come cut your trees down, it's gonna.
It's nothing, it's nothing different than what we thought.
It's not intended to to do that, the highway department, you you know, to the extent that the highway department deals with trees and sidewalks and whatever else goes on, the function of this is to implement your your public tree management plan, okay? And the point is, is that it it's public, it's gonna operate on public property, it's not gonna be on your private property. So i- if, you know, there isn't anything in the document that authorizes anybody to come onto private property.
This thing says go, you can go on private property and tell people to cut trees down, huh?
It does not.
No, it doesn't, Tony, it doesn't say that.
Where is it say? One twenty-two dash four.
Why are you saying that, it doesn't say that.
What part?
One twenty-two dash four B and C.
B, the tree commission is an advisory body to the village board of trustees and village departments.
We have a different one, this has an adendum.
The adendum, can I just respond to that for the like, the hundred millionth time, so everybody understands, you guys? The adendum is not what we're considering today. The adendum, our entire eleven-person committee voted to not consider that adendum. It's included there for the information of the trustees, because that's what we voted, I'm sorry, don't leave, I'm just having a tone voice, I'm just frustrated. We're not voting on that adendum, we're not, I mean, if they, if these four people would like to consider that, they may.
So why, why is it on here?
It's an adendum, it says it on the front page of the adendum, I'll just read it.
I don't think we.
Can I just read it, like, two old sections of the proposed draft tree ordinance, old sections, which were composed by village attorney Michael Legore in May twenty-fourteen are included here. The tree advisory committee voted to remove these from our consideration in drafting the ordinance. These two older sections are passed on to the board of trustees for their information, that's it. So can we please end the private property discussion, because we don't care about trees on private property, we we hope you love them. I feel like, I'm sorry, Gordon, but I feel like you guys are railroading this, this is a very good effort, just good.
Jeff, first of all, the the, don't I have to go in that direction, because, you know what, it was, it was, I originally worked around with two Halloween students, all right? And then the village decided not to fund the thing, a political move. Second, I turned around and I helped Stephanie, all right, and once I brought to her attention, she took it by the horns and we found some place and we did that, so I've got some sweat and tears, don't take them, that's not, that's not.
Why not, you have, you have files in my file that you kindly given to me, that's why I don't understand what you're worrying about.
Yes, that's not the direction, the direction is, that my my only thought, first of all, you can, you can change to what I wanted to actually ask you, and I was gonna ask you, if your committee was able to come up with any new tools from the work of our attorney and that, that's going to be able to benefit the village and what these tools might be, so you could relate to the rest of us who maybe have not up to speed on this thing.
Yes, well.
And just as they brought up on the utilities, there's. And just as they brought up on the utilities, there's something else, or a new tool, or maybe talking to other communities, where we can use some of these utilities that may from butchering our trees, and that was my question.
Was the utility question was your question? So I met at length with the utility forester in our area to try and figure out how we can better establish a relationship with the utility, so that a lot of the butchering that occurs could be minimized. I mean, the utility has the right to do what they have the right to do, and it supersedes the village right in a lot of cases. So what they told me was, you're doing the right thing. If you establish as a part of village government, a body of tree board who is paying attention to all of these trees, and that body wants to discuss on a case-by-case basis, when we come every four years and do our maintenance meeting on our, along our right of way, wants to discuss certain trees or certain areas that are of concern, we're, we're totally willing to talk to you, a hundred percent, they're very, very, very helpful. They're willing to remove trees for us that are, that are dying if they're in the right thing.
How are you coming at, but my question, that's not my question, my question was, have we discovered any new tools that we can utilize? I mean, that, that's a forgiven, that's a given, rather, and, you know, I appreciate your, your reach out with them. And I think that's what the community should be doing, which is a good thing.
And it's in the ordinance, that part of our discussion for utilities is in, it's in, it's enacted as part of the ordinance. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but maybe I'm misunderstanding your question.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you, you found something that was new, or if, one of the things that was gonna be of benefit to this committee was that you've piggybacked on some, talked around back in some of these other communities, and there's a way to go forward on, on being able to handle some of these utilities. Because I think we've all seen over, actually, the state of the trees in the village is because of the utilities. And, and, and poor planning on the types of trees and genus and everything else that we've selected over the years. And I think we all know this, okay? But that was my only question.
So I think the good thing is we know, we have a, a free public hearing, public hearing. So I, I think, um, the good thing is, is that, you know, we, we've got everybody kind of, kind of thinking. So I, I'd like to kind of actually move on, because there will be public hearing, there, there will be time for, for you to fill out a question.
Just a comment, I hear the word politicizing. We don't have the luxury of being at every meeting, um, so I do, so I try to get involved. Did I foil absolutely, why? Because when I ask when there's a meeting held, do you have any documents that I can peruse? The word comes back, comes back, we're not a committee, we're not a meeting, we're not meeting, it's not official, it's not open to open meetings law. Complete bump. I've spoken to, to Robert Freeman. It is open to committee law, open, OML. Many, many people thought OML stands for, oh my lord, it doesn't. It's open meetings law. That's why I, I have an issue with it.
We follow.
I don't have an issue, I don't have an issue.
We follow the open meetings law.
I don't have an issue with the trees, I think it's fabulous, I think it should be done.
Mike, what is, what is he talking about? I follow open meetings law, all of our documents are on that.
Jennifer, Jennifer, I'm not talking.
Alright, alright, come on, guys, please.
There were comments that are made about politicizing.
For discussion.
All I was doing is asking for documents, every time I asked, it's not available. Something's fishy there. Whether it was right or wrong, it was just, maybe it was the way it was delivered.
Can we just get the, the questions?
See, this is why, this is why we're talking about making this a committee. This kind of, you know, we're, we're, we're giving into this kind of, you know, innuendo.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get back to.
It becomes a political thing, and then you respond to it by saying, okay, even though we know darn well, when you look at, when you read the law, that the, the, it's only advisory, we're gonna placate that kind of talk by making it a, you know, a committee.
Donald.
No, 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 no. These guys are so far off track, please.
Can we get back to this one?
Yes. Just one, one clarification from the very beginning.
It's a sound, just like that.
From the very beginning.
Because there's other people waiting for other meetings, right?
I had one question from Mike Legore, was what is the difference between a committee, a board, and a commission? Back then, I was told that as long as it's spelled out in the law, there was no difference. This evening, I'm being told that there is a difference. So I, I mean, it's, it takes more research on my part, and everybody's part, I believe, as well.
What's the difference?
So I, I think what, what, what we're reading is.
I don't understand.
A threshold of a committee, a government.
So are, have we, have we, I think that we, we.
And I think we actually came to a compromise.
Yes, I think we did.
That's great, so can we move on to section one twenty-two four A, where the question of resident, non-resident participants in the, in the, the, the assembly of the committee is concerned?
I, I think as long as preference is given to residents, that I don't see any problem.
Yeah, no, as written.
I actually think it's a good idea to have somebody from outside, because they're more objective.
Yeah, we.
What, what were the?
It's not their neighbor.
What were the thoughts of the members of the advisory committee about this? I know that there wasn't consensus when we talked about this at our meetings. And I think that everybody had sort of, everybody sort of felt like they could go either way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they need to be, I summarized them last time. And the, the basic, it was basically, some people felt like it would be better just to have village residents who have some sort of, or, or have taxpayers be the people on the committee. Some people felt like business ownership who aren't village residents should be able to be on the committee because obviously they have a stake in the trees, in Main Street especially. Um, and then other, other people felt like it would be good to have at least a chance to have more, yeah, more professionals on the committee, so have a little bit of a bigger pool. And the idea, the sort of compromise was, it says may, so it's up to the village board. They may, you may appoint.
May exclude.
If, if there was an arborist that lived in Greater Philistown that was, "I would love to do this and give you all my free time," then you could appoint it. If there wasn't any, you could, you know, you give preference to taxpayers and residents, et cetera, like, that was the thought.
Yeah, I think.
I think the five best people are the people you ought to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we, that, that gives a discretion for, for us to compromise on what we can make of stuff.
And we can make the decision at the time of appointment.
Okay, so number, the third question was section one twenty-two dash six. I mean, it's not really a question anymore, I, I, because I spoke with Eddie about it, and it, it seems like as it's written here, it's workable to him as long as, you know, as long as there's enough time to consult. He doesn't have any problem as long as somebody runs down when he calls them.
Sure, sure, and, and I think what happens is, he's, he's well aware of his schedule for, for sidewalk maintenance. So, so the good thing is, is, you know, when.
He'll know in advance.
He'll know in advance, um, you know, there, I'm not gonna lie to you, you know, there may be a little bit of, of, of keeping an eye on, on both sides, because, you know, sometimes, you know, he just, that's the street, a lot of times we'll get a complaint, and we'll throw in a, a sidewalk repair that wasn't going to be. And that may be the instance where, you know, like, you know, he's, you know, Mondays and Fridays are out for them, you know, excuse me, Tuesdays and Fridays. So, you know, when, when, when he gets a short notice, he may want to dive into it. So I think that goes to the communication you guys have, where he needs to call and say, "Look, I'm scheduled tomorrow, you need to be there tomorrow, look at the street." Because there's a chance that, you know, he may go ahead if he doesn't get hold of somebody. And at the same time, you know, we need to do better about, um, you know, getting the list of his upcoming projects. So I, I don't, I don't personally see a problem with that. But, but again, that's us working together, and I don't, I don't see a problem with that. But is that also the same to the emergency work?
No.
Okay, that's later on.
Oh wait, yeah, it's that, that section, yes.
That's in one twenty-two.
Basically, if there's, if not the village, but if an outside person or entity applies to the village, oh no, that's different from emergency work. If someone else applies to the village to do something with sidewalks that involves a tree, the tree committee would be giving a comment.
Well, the emergency work is just gonna be what it is.
Emergency work doesn't count, because if it's emergency, it's emergency, that takes precedence, so.
Has no, okay, that's fine. Right, which is fine, as long as, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Um, and number four is, um, what did I say, section, the same, one twenty-two dash six, section B. I don't know, the, such, this comment was part of your comments, Mike, if you just wanna take over your comments to them.
Uh, you know, in existence right now in the village is chapter one twenty-two, which is called Trees. And it, it deals with, with, uh, one thing in particular. It says, uh, "No person shall in any way mutilate, cut down, injure, destroy any shade or ornamental tree upon the street, sidewalks, or parks within the village without a permit from the mayor." And then there's a penalty for the, for the, for.
It currently states from the mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why would it state that?
Because it's all about you, right?
But we're getting away from that, yes?
Yes.
Okay, good job.
Then there's a penalty for the, for, for the, for the offense. So when we were going to, and I apologize to the tree committee for, for ever connecting the, the two.
Advisor committee.
No, the current committee, not the, not, not what's next. Um, for ever connecting our existing chapter on trees to some form of some proposed amendment, because I think when people found out what the existing code felt, they thought that that's what was gonna be, what it was being proposed by the committee as opposed to what was already law in your village. So, um, when I had first generated a version of the, the law, I, I thought, alright, well, look, if we have chapter one twenty-two, that's probably a good place to, to, to take what we have and put it together, because I don't wanna have anything in conflict, and it just makes, it makes sense to me, caused a lot of confusion and concern, which I've never intended to have happen. Um, but when you look at one twenty-two, if you wanna, you know, continue any of the, the provisions in that, that section, and, and again, we're talking the, the two sentences that are in existing chapter one twenty-two of the village code.
You're talking about, what we're looking at is one twenty-two dash seven in the current version five, right?
Right.
Penalties for offenses, is what it's setting up.
Right, right, exactly. Um, I, I had made a comment, but, hey, look, if, if, if someone's gonna injure a public tree consistent with your code, right? Um, you're gonna pay an attorney, me, someone else, your hourly rate, whatever that, that is. And after the first hour and a half, you're gonna be over two hundred and fifty dollars. If there's an appearance ticket that's issued and a court appearance, you know, you're gonna, the juice isn't gonna be worth the squeeze. And people, not that they're going to go injure damaged trees, but everyone knows that the recourse is, you're not, you don't have any recourse that's available to you. And that was the basis for, uh, my, my, my comment that's not in draft five, version five, which is what everybody's looking at. I had marked up a version to just say, hey, look, just be aware.
This is in the, the red line that it's here.
Yeah, it's in the red line.
I'll read it, it says, "In instances where a driveway opening permit may require removal of a public tree or protect, uh, that does not go, uh, does not undergo subdivision side plan or subdivision approval, you may want to authorize the highway superintendent to require, if recommended by the tree board, a replacement tree or trees to be planted elsewhere in the village on public property to offset the loss of a public tree. Generally, mitigation is recommended in the form of a one-to-one replacement, but that's difficult to do with trees, so you may require a total amount of caliper circumference to be replaced, i.e. public tree with circumference of twelve inches to be replaced with six trees having two inches." And then for the, further than that says, "This chapter incorporates existing one twenty-two," which Mike was talking about. "The fine is capped at two hundred and fifty, but it's likely that in the event of a violation, the board may incur significantly greater cost for enforcement and replacement. The board in its review should consider here and across the zoning code that the reasonable cost of enforcement should be borne by the violator in appropriate amounts and not to the village residents as a whole."
And the, the suggestion on the, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you what my experience is on, on mitigation and the reference to the, let's say, six trees at two inches of caliper. Those are much less expensive to buy than one tree of six inch of caliper. So there's, there's, there's some thought to that, it's not just, you know, picking a number and causing people to expend a lot of money, it's actually less expensive to, to do it that way as opposed to some other.
There also, there's a higher survival rate if you're planting a tree of two, two inches rather than twelve.
So in terms of fines, what would be your recommendation of, what verdict would we use there to make it so that we're not passing it off?
I think what you want, what you may wanna consider is to leave it to the discretion of the court. Because if you're gonna be in a fine situation, then you'll be in front of the, uh, the ju. You could either set a fine. Um, I'm, I'm seeing right now, um, municipalities are, are, are going, you know, one of two ways. They're, they're leaving it up to the court to determine, or they're, they're levying fine amounts at seven fifty, a thousand, fifteen hundred. It, 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 when you see how expensive it is, and trees is not a good place to have this discussion. It should be in the discussion of your zoning code enforcement, because that's where, let's say Bill and I are working on a zoning code enforcement, and, and it's a, a significant breach of your zoning code. It could be very expensive for the two of us to, to bring in action, prosecute it, and get recourse for the village if we're left at two fifty. Uh, but I don't wanna scare anybody and say, you know, uh, I, I don't think you should have a minimum fine. I think what you should say, that fines could go up to X amount. And maybe you put that X amount at, at a few thousand dollars or more than a few thousand dollars. And that way it covers your, you know, it covers the village, or.
We can't just leave it as punishable by a fine set at the discretion of the court?
You could do that.
Yeah, I mean, rather than.
Yeah. Um, let me, let me just focus on that just a little bit, it doesn't need to be here right now, just because if, um, if there are instances where you don't have to get to the court, but you could, you could negotiate a fine, setting it by the court would actually force you to bring that action, so, um.
So at the discretion of the court or the board of trustees?
Yeah, I think that's the better way to go.
Can it be at the discretion of the board of trustees?
Um, I think you.
I mean, generally speaking, if somebody.
Right now, it's at the discretion of the mayor.
I, it's, no, no, I mean, the, the penalty, um, is not, is not at the, the discretion of the mayor.
Yeah, if it's under penal law, can we, can the board?
I mean, he's talking about something that doesn't make it to court, and it's being settled.
Right.
Right.
Right, right. But I'm wondering, can we actually say that the penalty for offenses would be at, at, at the discretion of?
I think what we, I, I get the point, I get the point of, that, you know, really the point is, is that there needs to be some reasoned elaboration for how that's going to be as commensurate.
Right, it has to be commensurate with the, like, the costs.
But not, right, right, it, that's exactly right, it, it should be commensurate with the cost of enforcement and whatever the mitigation is proposed.
So you will come up with that wording?
Yeah, I'll send you it.
And the mitigation would be determined by the village board of trustees, the mayor and the board of trustees? Are the mitigation as recommended by the advisory board unapproved by the?
Um. Let me just take some notes here.
I mean, I think that's a case where the person, where the board or the committee or the, whatever, wouldn't, that would be, why would they, I mean, they, the board could, the board of trustees could seek their opinion, but they're not even to approve anything.
No, the board wouldn't, the advisory wouldn't, it, it would just.
No, 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 it would be recommended by.
And I can just say from interviewing other villages, just to throw this out here, because you guys are considering it now, you know, that there's a lot of sort of anecdotal stories about things happening to, in this way, like damage to a public tree. Um, it happened in our village in front of someone's restaurant that I know, um, just last year, a brand-new tree that was planted. And the, sort of when push comes to shove, the enforcement isn't always, seems to be, as many as it's always there. So just keep that in mind. That's part of the reason why I was fine just leaving this as it is, it's, it's not, um, according to Mary, at least, it hasn't been a huge problem. People purposely killing trees, and hopefully it won't be, but, um, I'm fine, and I think probably can even be fine with, if you got, whatever you guys, okay, on that section. The majority of the court.
Those are the five?
Those are.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, the, uh, the line version includes, uh, Mike Legore's contributions, um, at the beginning of September. And they're in purple, a lot of them just go and, you know, they'll change the name, and we'll be changing it again to tree advisory committee. The, there are certain substantive changes, such as in one twenty-two four B, where reference to village board of trustees and departments and commissions, it has been expanded to refer to villages' staff, elected officials, the recreation board, and highway department. Where we're talking about the, the authority of the tree advisory committee is exclusively advisory two. And the, the roles that this committee is advisory to is village staff, elected officials, recreation board, and highway department. It's, is, do people have questions or comments about that in particular? And then the next, the next, uh, similar changes in J, sub one twenty-two four.
Can I, I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I wasn't sure why he did that. I wasn't sure why he did that, maybe, but does that mean it's not an advisory body to the board of trustees or is the board of trustees village staff?
No, no, they're elected officials.
Oh, elected officials, okay, forgot it. That's fine.
So, um, but instead of calling it village departments and commissions?
Okay, just a more specific, being more specific, right, great.
And um, and then the the same, same again occurs in one twenty-two four, one twenty-two dash four J. Where the committee shall make recommendations to, um, instead of the village, it's elected officials and employees. Just for consistency, it refers again to village staff, elected officials, recreation board and highway department. And then injury, injuries to trees prohibited has been relocated from one twenty-two five down to one twenty-two six. And um, the reference to tree lawn protection, which is in B in version, the version five. It's been combined with the injuries prohibited. So you see in one twenty-two dash six in the red line. Under the header injuries to trees prohibited, the following are proposed to be prohibited. Um, A, no person shall in any way mutilate, injure or destroy any public tree within the village. And B, no person shall place or maintain upon any tree lawn any materials which may impede the free passage of water, air and fertilizer to the roots of a tree growing therein. And that was uh, that was a distillation of the originally proposed B above.
And that was with the thought in mind that um there were businesses or or properties in the village that may have a box around the roots of the trees. Um, and and I can't speak to whether that's beneficial or not beneficial, but what we wanted to do was we just wanted to make sure that that we didn't preclude that, but as long as there was the um, you could still get water, air and fertilizer to the roots. That that was the goal, was to make sure that that we didn't just have some flat out rule that said you can't do anything in that particular area that's contrary to what goes on here. So.
I I think you may even have to expand that to what is allowed because, I mean,
Well, I think.
what would you consider a kind of a planting barrier with bricks on top? Is that permeable?
Well, that doesn't impede the free passage of water, so I would say that it would, it would be around.
Okay.
It's basically like blacktop or some.
Blacktop.
Some capsulation.
Yeah, total, total.
Yeah, something in purple.
Plastic.
Like this root, you know, when you want the leaves, you can have stuff.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, but that's, that's pervious to water.
No, that's, that's water. Yes.
Well, the weed, the fabric.
Landscape fabric.
The weeds get stuff, but some people actually look at like, oh, what, plastic, yeah, what, plastic.
Yeah, well, the.
Um.
Well, again, we're talking about the villages trees, the public ones.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, yeah.
You know, not the, not what you might do on your own private property.
And then, um, there's a, a section added one twenty-two eight. Um, any person aggrieved by the provisions of this chapter may apply to the board of trustees for relief and shall hear the matter, uh, who shall hear the matter and make final decisions.
So are you in agreement on this draft pending Mike's, um, Mike will get the language that you guys want on the the fine section?
It sounds that for the most part we're in agreement.
Um.
It's, I guess, the merging of the two drafts. It needs to happen.
Okay.
So, uh, do we, do we wanna set a date for a public hearing for the document as we were doing? And naturally, naturally, we'll, we'll review the document before, um, before that. But should we set a public hearing while we're, we're at it now? I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing. Do I have to specify a date?
Yes.
Okay.
And a time.
Um, how, how far do I have to?
Um, you want at least ten days notice.
Oh, oh, well, that's easy. Um, should, should we do it, um, Ralph, do you have a conflict on the twenty-fifth of November? Oh, wait, that's before Thanksgiving, sorry.
No, no.
Oh, I absolutely don't have a problem with that. But I mean, it's.
Oh, it's a public hearing, so we, we needn't bow. Um, what do you think, Catherine, Mike?
The twenty-fifth is no good? No one likes the twenty-fifth?
Of what day we're talking about?
November, twenty-fifth Tuesday?
It's before Thanksgiving.
Oh, it's before Thanksgiving?
Before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's fine.
Mike, sorry, I don't know.
Okay, uh.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
No one else is coming on the eighteen?
Who is?
Seven thirty? The financial advisor.
Okay.
December second.
Okay.
December second?
Yeah.
Motion to hold a public hearing for the draft tree ordinance on December second.
Is there a second? Okay.
At seven thirty.
Seven thirty, at village hall?
At village hall.
Uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So is that pending your approval of whatever?
Well, we're, we're gonna, it's as, as we discussed.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I'm just wanting to know, I need to do something else.
Yep.
No.
No, okay.
No, and uh, so tree advisory committee members, thank you very much. And Gordon, thank you for your help.
Okay, number two, consider options for public restroom maintenance. Um, Bruce has been working this. Unfortunately, he has a health issue in his family that he's tending to. Um, all is okay, but he was unable to make it. He has the information on that. The good thing is that Joe Russo has been more than willing and kind enough to step up and and help maintain the restrooms until we can get a final solution. Biggest issue, I spoke to Bruce today, the biggest issue we may have is that um, Joe scheduled may not allow him to open and close, um, which is fine. We can we can take, we can take care of that for them. So with that, um, we'll move this on to, uh, when Bruce comes back and just.
Mr. Mayor, just wanna know, I was aware of Mister, of trustee, uh, deputy mayor, actually Bruce, over the weekend, you had an issue with, uh, and he was able, he went out his time and spent quite a bit of his time, uh, taking care of, uh, down there and, uh, he should be noted.
He wrote one of the most classic emails, I think, that's ever been circulated in the village.
Oh, you said, yeah.
Do we know why the, or how the water got turned off?
I do not. I was dumbfounded by what I said.
How do you turn the water on in the building?
Somebody turn the water on in the utility closet.
You have to be in that, the utility closet.
It's a locked closet that you need a key for.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then it was a village employee that's.
Someone else has a key. And to that, I mean, you know, not to the leader, but, um, it's a very valid point. I think we need to start working on worksheets because there was issues on getting the original work. It was emergency repair that needed to be done and this thing, you know, kinda, so.
It's running all over the place.
Yeah, we're looking to 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 get a better, better system in 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 maintaining our stuff in emergencies and irregular time. So just change it to sign ordinance, chapter one oh four.
So in this exercise, we're taking our unenforceable chapter one oh four and making modifications so that it is enforceable. And have something else here?
Yeah, I have, I brought, I went through my emails to try to find what codes I had previously sent to. I could not find what it was.
I wanna say Dover, Pauling was one of them. They were all from the other side of the county, through twenty-two.
Yeah, and that's the, I, I was gonna print off Phillips Town and then I thought.
Mary, you found one. Thank you, Mary, from Mount Kisco. I don't know if that's. Does that look like anything that you have come across?
Yeah, I mean, but it's not what I sent. Um, I I had copied for tonight. I I brought some copies of what what they do in Patterson and then an example of what was um, exempt in the town of Southeast because that kind of elaborated what what Patterson had as exempt. Um, but I think the, at least to kick off the discussion, understanding why current section one oh four isn't isn't, um, enforceable is 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 important for the board, um, which is that there's a sentence or a part of a sentence that says, no person shall post hang or cause to be posted or hung any handbill, notice or placard except legal notices upon any post telegraph or electric light pole, tree or fence or other object in any street or public place. So this is a limitation on, uh, public po- posting of signs in public um, without a permit from the mayor. So and our code is rife with with references to without a a permit for the mayor. And I think maybe with the assumption that there would be criteria that would be enumerated somewhere else.
No, no, it's just, ah.
You know, but, um, but that's, that's why in in the the LUSK litigation, um, that was the problem and and you guys aren't the only person, the only municipality that that has a code that still has.
Yeah, and in that lost litigation, there was a one of the, the statements was, what was the, uh?
Well, it was a complete concession on behalf of the village that their code wasn't enforceable. Uh, I think I brought.
In the, in the, in the decision.
Yeah, it's in the decision, yeah, it's, um.
And so this is a long time coming.
Yeah, it's something, uh, uh, it makes it tough to get around when it's in the final judgment. So that's the, 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 uh, order from the the district court, which is our federal court system. Uh, that the village is enjoined from enforcing chapters one oh four and one thirty-four. Uh, chapter sixty-four does not violate the First Amendment. And so after that, uh, it was the, uh, concession that one oh four wasn't enforceable, but the reason being is that there was no criteria for the mayor to rely on to issue a permit. Thus, it could be arbitrary and capricious however you decide to issue someone a permit. You may like someone or dislike someone else. So in order to make one oh four enforceable in its current iteration, you would have to either take it out and just say you cannot post any signage on public property or set forth some criteria, some dimen- some dimensions that you you feel is is appropriate. Uh, and then I, I think the, the last thing that was worthy of of discussion was, I I don't know if there was an intention on the board to essentially rewrite the sign code or at least just set some minimum criteria for signs that could be posted in 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 public. Uh, it could be as as simple as you saying, you know, no sign shall be greater. Uh, you know, without a permit from the mayor, provided such signage is not greater than twelve by twenty-four or whatever it is you determine you feel is appropriate. So.
I think the discussion started with what was going on at the red light up here.
That's right, that's right. And and that's, if you had, where we had left off with that was that the state was dealing with, uh, curb to curb in that particular instance. And if there was anything in their right of way, they'd be taking it down anyway and bringing it over to the county and putting it next to the dumpster and leaving it there until either people picked it up or a month and a half went or two months went by.
So, um, in in our earliest discussions about this, um, I think one of the things that we talked about was the idea that we want to allow signage that, um, is useful and informative to village residents. Um, it serves a purpose. We have, um, I think the, the, the super, the supersized sign that was out there that caught our attention was one for the farmer's market. Um, and which was removed, um, and it was, um, I think that generally we all thought it was much too big, but, um, they have a sign up there. It's a sandwich board. Oh, um, uh, other organizations put up sandwich boards. Um, and also people put up, uh, little, you know, signs on state. So, I think that did, did we, I don't know if we, we came down with a consensus on, on prohibiting them outright. I don't think we did, um.
I don't think anybody was talking about prohibiting.
Yeah, no, I think.
We did talk about having designated areas though, and that the center of the village possibly might not be the best place for it.
I, I don't remember that, but, um.
We did talk about having, you know, game places.
Where, you have other locations.
You know, the times, I, I, I remember that came up and then then we were kinda diverted to the fact that that um, that lawn was private property.
Yeah.
What, which one, what one is there?
Saint Mary's.
Saint Mary's?
Oh, the lawn on the.
I did.
They don't want to put the candlelight sign on Saint Mary's, so that's.
They do, but then there's the utility strip as where all the others, and that's not private property.
Where the minister's.
No, and that was the other one.
Which was in the original.
What were our laws enforceable on that utility strip?
I, our laws are, and I think we, we, uh, the discussion that we had was, um, once we found out where the state would determine that its right of way was, it said it was curb to curb. So then, then we know that, that we, if if we own the sidewalk in that area, then it's village property and and it's, it's, what, you shaking your head? We don't or no?
I just can't imagine the state saying we own that sidewalk. It's again, it's for their purpose.
No, no, the state was saying they owned from curb to curb, that they didn't own the sidewalk.
That's my point.
Okay, yeah.
That is their installation. That was their whole project. I just can't imagine it is, but, because we had the same problem, the drainage.
I was gonna ask you, does this?
The drainage was the same thing, they.
But I think we're saying the same thing. We're, we're, I'm saying to you that that the state owns from, they told me that they own from curb to curb.
Right.
And I'm saying that provided we own, first of all, we regulate anything that's on our property and anything that's on private property. So if you wanna adopt any regulations and deal with either or both, it's, it's, it's free to go. And in addition, if if, right now, if you wanna put a sign in the state right of way, you have to go to the state and go get a use and occupancy permit. And what they do is they check to see whether or not that sign is conforming to the regulations in the district that it's proposed to be placed in, even though it's on their property.
Right, but and again, not to get off subject, which we do very well. When you look at the the DOT safety crossing signs they put up, they put it up in the utility strip, which is outside or inside curb to curb. So for them to say they only own curb to curb goes against their policies and practices. So I mean, you know, that's that's what state does, so, all right, so anyway.
Their practicality.
That's a. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, anyway, so, um, so to go forward, we need to, first of all, we're in agreement, we're not looking to cross out all signs.
Right.
But where.
Second of all, we're in agreement that the, the mayor permit thing needs to go.
Mm-hmm.
That's just ridiculous. Um, and then it's, um, a matter of how we word sandwich board, twelve by eighteen, twelve by twenty-four, that type of stuff.
Right, you, it's those dimensions that are, what's lacking.
What's what, what we're lacking.
Right.
Um, but are we, I'm sorry, I thought trustee Bowman was suggesting a different location, um, than, or that was resolved?
No, we were, I discussed.
You've resolved?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
We also discussed political signs and that feature as well.
Yeah, now, it's funny, I was looking at, at, uh, um, political signs are are regulated in in different ways. The, the message isn't regulated, but the size is is regulated and where they're posted and and, um.
But not on private property.
You can, you can regulate size, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's entirely within the realm.
And I don't think we're interested in tackling that question.
Even if it's. No, that's, I was hoping we weren't gonna go there.
Yeah, no.
Not on private property.
No, I think, I, you know, what we wanna do is really just limit our discussions to what goes on on public property.
My, my question would be for political signage, is it appropriate to mark off an area in the village where they're allowed say at the entrances to the village on the state roads, like, uh, Peaceville Road and, actually, that's outside of us. Uh, say near like Butterfield Development and down by Mayor's Park or something, yeah, River Road, which is the town too. Rather than letting them proliferate throughout the entire village and all of the DOT right of ways.
Um, or you mean on village property?
Yes.
Um, I, I'll tell you, I believe that you guys would be on on solid footing by designating those areas. The question is, is, and this is what the court's gonna look at, is, you know, of those areas within some form of significant public view, because if you say your political signage.
It's a district.
Well, that, that's. Well, that that's just adds a layer, um but but you know, if you said, alright, well, you know, there's a piece of public property that's out in the woods. And that's where you go put your political signage and no one can see it, then I'm telling you, you know.
It'd be a visible, well-traveled area.
Right, right, um. I believe from the the court cases that I've looked at and that you could do that, um. I think you'd be okay if you did it, as you know, as long as everybody is, you know, those are highly visible areas, they get a lot of traffic, both foot and vehicle. What we wanna do is prevent somebody, some candidate, from making the argument that that they're not able to, you know, advertise their campaign, um.
And this might be a conversation we don't wanna.
Yeah, I mean, right, right.
I don't feel like we need to have that conversation, I mean, I feel like we wanna make our code enforceable for. And if that's gonna take us down a rabbit hole, I would be in favor of not going down there now.
I mean, I'll 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 look into it.
We'll be done.
Some of the different things that are out there, if you have an example or two that you can shoot to me.
In uh in southeast, their political signage, and and this is why I copied it, because it I I thought it'd be interesting for you guys to say.
And I think that's where I got the idea was from the one that you sent originally, which was southeast.
Yeah. Um it says political posters, banners, promotional devices and similar temporary signs. Such signs shall not exceed sixteen square feet in a business or an industrial district, nor five square feet in a residential district. Um no more than one sign per event or candidate is permitted per parcel. So if you go drive down some a residential neighborhood, one sign per lawn, that's it. Then it says signs shall be placed on private property, they do not permit political signage on public property anywhere in that town. It's completely, it it says.
Now, this is the town for you, Gordon.
I'll vote for that.
Not to say it isn't littered completely with political signage.
My only my only pet peeve is in front of the polling station, there's there's an usual, it's a hundred and ten feet from the polling door.
Mm-hmm, and that's where it all is.
And and the curb just happens between the the curb and the sidewalk, hundred and one feet. And and uh and uh basically every single, there'll be, you know, fifty signs there, and I just find it in bad taste, no matter what the the issue.
Yeah.
And and it's, I get, it's a tricky habit, you know.
Uh so um. So.
Or research, you know.
Yeah, and if you can send that and and you wanna touch base with the HDRB and get their uh, cause I mean, that is that layer that we're going to to cross.
Yeah, and I mean, that's part of their code update, is they're looking into the signage.
But. Does um does the signage referred to in the historic district code, um. If you, if we're if we're updating this and we're applying certain standards, um and there is a. If there is a discrepancy between what chapter one oh four says and chapter sixty four says, um which one? Which one prevails, I guess, do we have that kind of a? Clause?
Well, right now, I don't believe the HDRB has jurisdiction over.
Temporary signs.
Oh, they don't have uh jurisdiction over signs in public spaces, right.
Right. Both, either.
Okay. Okay, so we're taking it without the care.
Sir?
I'll come back.
Mike, if I could just interject, I think we're only talking about signs of a temporary nature.
For chapter one oh four, that's correct.
Yeah, I don't, that's it, this might be saying about beyond a certain period of time, these are temporary nature because in the um historic district. Uh you're prohibited uh from posting even temporary signs beyond a certain period of time, and permanent signs are specifically handled. Under the uh HDRB section, sister of God.
Okay, so so we don't have a a conflict here, um with chapter sixty four, so. So are the standards, do do we want to talk about the standards, the size standards, that you need to discuss?
If you have some thoughts about what what you think is an appropriate size, then it'd be great to know what your thoughts are, because.
Well, I I did like the southeast square footage because of its, you know, odd shape, they still have to fall within the square footage. You know, because, you know, probably, you know, I mean, like the sandwich boards, I mean, I I'm not necessarily opposed to them, um but, you know, they're not. They can be weird sizes, so.
Yeah, I was I was talking about not to exceed X length or, you know, X width and not to exceed X height, but. How big is that park sign, I know it's, I know they post it at Saint Mary's, but if they were to post it at the corner of Tyvek's, at Lund and. And and Tyvek House, um that's public property, so, oh, it's it's only three and a half feet, I I for some reason I thought it was taller than that.
You know, Bill had circulated a a memo with with a bunch of pictures that might be a good idea to to apply there.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think the park sign is actually a good, maybe a good focal point, you know, that's.
Well, if we were to say that, I mean, I like the idea that it that making it just really simple and not prescribing a whole bunch of.
Not larger than the park sign. Right.
Pretty tiny measurements, and it can be a nightmare, and just simply say, um not to exceed X in width and X in height.
Sure, sure, sure.
And leave it at that, and so if somebody wants it to be that wide and that tall, well, okay. And so it seems like the the signs that we have, that people have. Because the park one is three.
Well, the park sign, I mean, the park is sign is the biggest sign, and it it requires a couple of people and a truck, I don't think everybody who wants to put out a garage sale sign or a. Any kind of sign, even um the Garrison Art Center, I mean, they have a very standard, you know, sign that they use. So I really don't think anybody would even want to use a sign as big as parks because it's.
I think some of the the sandwich boards.
It requires help.
Are the farmer's market, the sandwich board is is pretty wide and sort of stout, um and then it has a little thing on top and it looks to be. I, you know, three feet, it may be three feet wide and three and a half feet tall, um so. Do do we wanna say not to exceed three feet wide and four feet tall, or?
I have to look at examples of signs to see exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, I I think that's where we're.
I mean, I was just, I'm just talking about the the signs that people do use, I mean, we don't wanna say, okay, we've passed this law, now you can't put up your farmer's market sign, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's where we're going, yeah, yep.
Except for that really super giant one, staple to the.
Yeah, four by. Four by four, she can fly with something to that effect.
All right. Okay, so are we at a similar place we found ourselves a couple of last night?
I think.
Um.
No, I think we're actually in a better place.
Are we, are we?
No, we're actually talking dimensions, which is, you know, that that's really the the key here is is uh what you feel is an appropriate dimension for those items, because.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um what the other municipalities have done is they've identified them for themselves and determined what's permitted, but it's, you know. Um that's the info that I need from you guys, it's not really legal info, it's it's really practical information as to what you think is appropriate. So, um and and if.
So do do we like the idea of, I mean, do we like the idea of saying that it's simply um not to be posted in a, you know, exceed.
The fact that you said simply is yes, that is the answer, yes.
Where it says in any street, home, place or village that um, you know, two that exceeds. And then just give, you know, some width and height dimensions. And then we can see, well, who are the people who put them up and the find the biggest one, we wanna allow them and say, okay, measure that one.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Is that, is that scientific enough?
Yeah, I I think it's gonna be a um combination of what we had previously and maybe a chart of. Showed us from Al Kisco showing the dimensions and layouts and things like.
Well, do we need that that though, a chart?
Well. Yeah, I was just gonna say, so these charts that the other municipalities are using, they're using them particular to the various zoning districts.
Right.
As opposed to public property as a whole.
Just. Right.
They're saying pu- you know, for public property, it's gonna be, either you just can't have it, or it could be in, you know.
Exactly, it's it's not needed because we have really one question to talk about in the village.
Yeah, exactly, but when, let's say, you know, when when, you know, if and when you guys look at signage as a whole as it relates to the village, that's when your chart.
Yeah, yeah, I think, the size.
Would be created at that point to say this district is X, that district is Y, some other district is Z.
Yep.
So we'll just. Yeah, I mean, I'll I'll punch up on the internet, look at some sign dimensions and then, so I think each one of us shoot, like, what we're comfortable with as being a limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, send me some notes and then I'll just get it, you know.
Cool.
And Mike, if you don't have this from Bill, you could take my copy, oh, you, okay, good.
I have it.
Uh next, chapter forty, building construction regarding permit renewal. So I know we've we've kind of wrestled with this a little bit, um. Going back and forth, past practice, um.
So the reason, the reason we're doing this is because the, what the building inspector came to us and said, I do things differently than spelled out in the village code, right? And the code says we have six month permits and three month renewals. Um but we've all become accustomed to receiving twelve month permits and renewals for twelve months.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
So section forty dash. Three.
A two.
Two. Right, so the proposal is to change the six months to twelve months. And to change the reference to. To remove the reference to for good cause. For periods not to exceed three months and instead refer to a renewal for one additional period of twelve months. Um so we are limiting the number of renewals um to only one renewal, so people would have to finish their projects in two years. And then adding this little sniglet here that says you have to apply for. Um you have to apply for your renewal within uh thirty days. Prior to the expiration, no less than thirty days prior to the date of expiration. Of your permit, um. I I don't think that um, you know, we live in a a community where a lot of homeowners do their own work, and I don't think that capping. The renewals at one renewal is, it's a, it's a good idea, I think um in our, in July, when we were first talking about this, Tom Monroe, who's the former. Inspector from the town, um had said that the town doesn't doesn't include any restrictions, um and I think. As I recall, our conversation was discussing the, what. What we wanna do to motivate people to finish, right, is that because we like the idea of of projects being finished? Um but we acknowledge that if people aren't able to complete their project because of, you know, financial, for financial reasons or whatever. That, well, there it is, I mean, then you just, you you're not gonna have, you're not gonna be able to compel them to finish their project if it costs them money. And so I. For my part, I'm supportive of of changing this to not a a permit of of twelve months. Um and to be renewed for periods of twelve months, um and upon application to the building inspector for, you know, within a a window. Um I but I'm not in favor of of capping the the number of renewals.
Well, if somebody gets halfway through a project, they're running low on money, they get to the end of the renewal period. What's the next step, they have to go back through the whole process?
Well, they've started, that's a very, that's a nuance, okay, it's the people that haven't started the construction.
Mm-hmm. I'm more worried about the people who have done some work and maybe are running low on funds and they can't finish within the two years.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Cause this doesn't address that nuance, it it, right?
Yeah, we we, right, there is no.
Yeah. We had, we had discussed a couple of different options, uh actually, I had said at least two renewals, I didn't, didn't want just one.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, and I, Steph, I thought that's where we left off, that that we had at least two, and I had notes that said.
Uh, yeah, but it's not on.
Oh, the this one here just says one.
Three. Oh, okay, in in my, in the book I had, the last note I I had was.
So.
Says three years.
I I had a note.
Two additional periods, right?
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's what, I mean, uh Bill, this is, this is what you tell people now, that they can't have more than two renewals, correct?
That's correct, okay, and let me just uh preface this just a little bit here, that's that's not clear, um. When I came on this job five years ago, uh it had, the the permits were being issued one year with two uh two renewals, that's the way it was, and I I traced it back to the nineteen eighties.
Right.
And then it was brought to my attention about a year ago, and prior to you taking office, I asked your predecessor to uh to uh possibly address it. And it didn't get addressed, and then it was, I brought it up again because it was brought to my attention again, that there's a question whether we were doing it legally. Because the code said one thing and the practice that I had inherited uh said another, so what we did is.
But that's been clarified.
That's been clarified now, we're we're issuing a six month and uh three uh three month renewals.
As of right now, we're following the exact language of the code.
Code, exactly what the code said.
Yeah, yes.
That's right.
Good, I mean, that's good, because I've been asking for this for a while, uh but one of the things, um, uh I think to answer your question, Stephanie, is that uh where am I going with this? I'm trying to find a way.
That's also my question.
Okay, what?
My my question isn't where you were going, I was just confirming for the room and for the discussion, that.
Yes. Sure.
That while we're we're proposing to include a limitation on the number of renewals that people are able to um enjoy. That that that's not how the code reads now, and yet despite that, that's what you've been telling people.
Up to the point that we went back to what's in the code.
Right, in in September recently.
Uh actually, I think it was August, it was the end of August, beginning of September, you're right.
So just.
Let's answer your question, okay, Mike.
Well, I have a whole nother question.
Alright, uh cause I wanted to go back to you first.
Right now, the way things are being done, it's issued for six months, and then you come back for two, three month renewals?
No, no, no.
As many as you want, as many as you want.
Yeah, we just follow the code.
So people who've had projects on going for eight years have come back every three months for.
No, because it was never applied that way, that was the problem.
But they can. Yes.
Now they can because we're applying it for the code.
Alright, so now to get back to my other question.
Okay, so.
And are are they entitled to that, I mean, if somebody, uh the way that, the way the code is written now is, is an applicant. Who comes to the village to apply for um.
A renewal.
A renewal, are they entitled to a renewal?
Well, it depends.
And what does it depend upon?
Alright, our code says for good cause.
And is that, how do we define good cause?
We don't, so so we just, we kind of have to give them, so we should be deleting those words, okay?
So it's a so. Mm-hmm.
Um Mike, to answer your question, the person that comes in that has commenced construction. And they need to get a renewal because they haven't completed the construction as of yet, they they are. Supposed to renew their permit until such time as they finish and then make application for a certificate of occupancy.
Mm-hmm.
For those people that don't have any other permits, let's say something from the HDRB. Or a um, uh let's say, a variance from the zoning board of appeals, which raises a a little bit of a more nuanced question. They can just come, keep getting renewals until such time as they finish. The person that has a certificate of appropriateness from the HDRB has limitations. When you get your certificate from the HDRB, you have to pull a permit within two years and finish the work within another year. Or else your HDRB permit expires, and there's no provision as to whether or not you started or didn't start. Um generally, that person who started the work but isn't finished within, let's say, the one year period. Would uh would make an argument that they vested their rights under their building permit because they've done one of two things, they've either completed substantial construction. Or expended significant funds, that's that's where the court cases go down that path.
Yes.
Um but as of right now, um those two chapters are mutually exclusive of each other.
Sorry.
Chapter sixty four for those properties in the historic district and then those properties that are not, if you're not, you just come in until you.
Yep.
You uh, as of right now, there's no limits on renewals, so if we put a limit on renewals, that person would then have to reapply for a new building permit, they shouldn't be denied, they're just gonna pay more money.
Yeah, so my next question would be, what is the argument to have two instead of one? When if we leave it at one renewal, they need to come back and it means more income for the village.
You're right.
Well, but the renewals cost, I mean, it's, the renewals cost, actually, the renewals cost, cost more than the, more than the permit.
Well, they do, they.
Renewals do, but. Mm-hmm. But the reapplication costs more than the renewal.
No, 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 hold on, if.
You you wouldn't reapply.
If, if the. Um if you can't, if you don't have any more renewals left, then you have to make your new building permit, if that 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 permit cost, you know, if that's. At that point, you're gonna be generating more income for the village, okay, if that's more than the renewal, but it you're not gonna have a choice at that point.
Oh, right, of course, right, 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 yeah.
Get it?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Well, so are we looking at this as, do we want this clause to be a revenue generator? Well, so are we looking at this as, do we want this clause to be a revenue generator for the village?
It should be, yeah. I mean, the building department is a is a stream of revenue. That's why we changed the fees.
Bill, I I and I I don't I don't know offhand, but is the building permit cost, does it correlate to to the amount of the value of construction?
Uh, no, what it it's based upon is uh actually, it's a two-step fee. When you get a building permit, first is an application fee, uh which then either it might be a ZBA referral or or something, or we may go over with the the party and they may not want to go ahead with the project. So that's the end of it. Once they get, uh they go ahead and they we get the proper documentation, there's a per square foot cost based upon the nature of the uh the addition, alteration, new construction, whatever it is. Okay, so it it is, it's not cheaper to renew. Okay, because it's gonna be seventy-five plus a minimum of seventy-five, which is set in our uh our fee schedule. So in theory, it could be a hundred and fifty. Renewal is um a hundred dollars right now. The the two things, I think we're kind of losing sight of one thing. Is it double-edged sword? Yes, it is a fee generator. Uh, I think that's uh and if you're asking people to pay for what they're doing, not for something they're not doing. So you're involving a village entity and you're it's costing money to involve anybody in the village. So the the thing is, it's paying for somebody that's using it. If they weren't using it, they're not paying for it. That's number one. Number two is, well, we have to realize that the uh the building permit is really a safety and code issue. Okay, it it's basically, uh what it is 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 to make sure that the work is being done in compliance with applicable codes, whether it be building code, fire code, maintenance code, health code, whatever it might be. Um, so what it does is is it's a checks and balances on who's doing the work. Now, it's still important, say, in a residence, in one single-family residence, because many people make jury rape alterations and then they sell the house and we're stuck with, okay. But where it really affects us is is commercial or multifamily. Okay, so when you bring up the subject of they run out of money, the question is, is at what point are they in the construction? Where are they in the safety factor? Okay, if the house isn't complete in theory, they can occupy it. Okay, because it's not a safe occupancy. Okay, so they would have to be brought up to a safe occupancy. And they can stop their project if they don't want to put their, uh, you know, ditching.
This doesn't, this doesn't, I mean, this clause here isn't talking about the question of whether or not they're occupying it, simply talking about
Code.
whether or not they're they're entitled to renew a permit.
Right, but it's a step process. And I think, you know, Ralph, you've dealt with it.
And it's not.
Uh, I think where the process is, is that they really can't, nobody can occupy it, their their premise, whatever it might be, whether it's the outhouse on the corner or a multi-story building here in town. Uh, what it comes down to is is it's the safety of the structure and that around it. So it then generates a certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance. So what it is, is this is all, it's a domino effect of permits and uh safety checks.
Right, I I understand that when you get there, but you can't get there until you finish your work. You can't finish your work until you
That's correct, yes.
have, you know, gotten your permit. And if it takes longer than the what they're we're saying here is, I guess, three years of having having the ability to the work, to do the work. Um, I guess my my question is, why why are we capping it? That's not a question of safety, that's.
I think it's a it's a, I wouldn't say a codekeeping, but a record-keeping situation. Where the problem is, has been in the past, again, prior uh with me and prior to me, okay. And you had basically two predecessors totaled close to eighteen years prior to me. Um, and where where the problem was is is that it's capping out the project. Okay, and capping out the project is a lot of residences, a lot of commercial parcels in the village were given a building permit. They may and may not have renewed it. They occupied it. And it was never closed out. It was never CO generated or a certificate of compliance.
Right, but that's not a question, that that's not answered by this. This is this clause, no, it's not. This clause is about
Yes. Yes, it is.
saying that you're only allowed a certain number of renewals. That, I mean, what you're talking about there is is the person who doesn't come back to you to apply.
Right.
This this clause is talking about an interchange between the applicant and the building department where they come and they say, I want to renew my, I want to renew my permit. And because they're, I I want to renew their permit for for whatever reason.
Okay.
And so and so that's not a question of of issuing a CO. That's a question of being able to continue working on a project that isn't finished.
Yeah, but yes, it is because there's a lack of, and the word control is too much, but there's a lack of accountability. What happens is is that using a non-capped building permit, you can go twenty years.
And but, yeah, but if the person is coming back and applying for a renewal.
Okay, and there's and.
That's okay if if there's unless there's a safety issue, which is, I think that's that's that's.
Well, I I think.
So it it makes sense to have a one-year cap or a two-year cap or a short cap.
Right, that's what I'm.
So do we need to?
Well, I I don't know. What would if we had to cap it, what would be something that you would think is agreeable if we have to cap it?
Well, I guess I want to know, I I'm not clear on why it needs to be capped, and I would like to understand that. I'm I'm not.
No control.
I I think.
Well, I I can, I can, I can, in 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 long time, you can, in in my time here, you can think of, I I I can name three, um, which I won't, that were also known as the Tyvek house. You know, over over, you know, in in three of my home, and again, you know, so it's it's not.
Right. Does Tyvek re come and reapply?
Well, depending on the scope of their project, you know, the siding probably needed to be on to be to be in compliance to close up, to get their CBO. And I don't know the scope of the work.
Is there even a permit on that?
To the point is is is.
Okay, I let's, I I, okay, I'd like to see that then and say, if you're the code enforcement officer
Don't know.
and there is no siding on a structure and you don't know if there's a permit, then your job, your mission, which you have accepted, is to go and and enforce the code, right? On on that, okay. So so if you're saying, oh, well, you know, we have a a Tyvek house situation and that's the reason we need to cap these renewals, well,
Yes, it is, yes. Hmm, no, that's not accurate.
a Tyvek, well, that's
Okay, so again, if if you don't need a permit to recide your home.
metaphorically, it's referring to Tyvek.
Uh, in the historic district, it definitely.
But if you're outside historic, so that unfortunately, that Tyvek thing wouldn't be, but if you were doing an addition
Mm-hmm.
and then you chose not to side your house,
Mm-hmm.
then you are, um, or you chose not to finish in three years, theoretically, your good neighbors are are looking at a a Tyvek house for longer than they should have to because they always said, well, I don't have time, I don't have money. And, you know, they're, I I think what happens, I just think, you know, aesthetically, I I don't think that it's fair that others um should suffer because there's no cap. But to that, I mean, you know, for the for good cause thing brings up a, you know, this this um, you know, this way to compromise saying, look, you know, you if you want to renew again, you can't renew unless you at least side your house. And, you know, so so I think there's value to both sides. I think there's value to having a cap because you need to finish.
Is.
So in your.
But but I think that, you know, for in the for good cause, and not to use those terms again, but with the capped, even if it's two or three, there should may or could be ways to, um, you know, create a hardship to to,
Encourage.
you know, and whether it's simply is this another renewal or uh excuse me, just another reapplication or a renewal, which is cheaper, you know, and and again, I, you know, I don't want to get into this gray area where how come he gets it, but there are some serious cases where people just you you can't finish and you shouldn't be allowed to never finish because you always have this excuse of time or money. I think you should be forced to finish your project because you you entered into this agreement in good faith to get a building permit. You should finish, but as a community, I think we should, you know, have these, well, you know, look, there are some hardships, so there should be some ways to, look, you side your house, what we need to, and again, I mean, these are just things that, you know, a as neighbors, I think that's what we're looking for. We don't, we shouldn't have to be subjected to a neighbor that has Tyvek because they constantly have no time or money.
Poor Tyvek.
But if you have no time or money, you shouldn't be bullied by us by saying, I don't care you have any time or money. If you don't finish, this happens to you. So I mean, you know, for me, within the three years, I think, uh, two or three years is fine with a cap, with a clause to allow the hardship to be vetted by however the process is and and, you know, fair because we do encourage, we do like the fact that you live in this village, you can do your own projects. And I think that's a a bonus and a selling point. But that doesn't give you right never to finish because your excuse is, I don't have any time or I don't have any money. So then I mean, shouldn't have started. So I mean, I think there's value to capping, but there should be a way to, um, you know, enjoy the, you have a hardship, you know, we we can understand that and we want to help you get through this project without just saying, get out.
So so if we're gonna um apply a s a hardship standard to this law?
I wouldn't go there.
So we then we have to define that, right?
I take it back. I rescind my motion.
It sounded good.
But but you're saying, talking about the good neighbor question, the good neighbor question. And so
I mean, it. Okay.
in in other communities, how has the good neighbor question been dealt with?
You mean the language of good cause or?
No, I think Ralph was saying that, ah, you know, the reason we want to limit these is because we want to encourage people to finish they their neighbors don't suffer from the blight of having to look at somebody working on their house.
Yeah, there's a this, there's there is a there, it's a very valid point, which is, look, if you're gonna go get, if if you're gonna make a building permit application to go do something, you've essentially committed and you go start the work, right? That's the point. You can go get the permit and never do the work. Let the permit expire or renew it and just pay and pay and pay. That that that's that's fine. But if you're going to commit to the work, I recognize Bill's first point, which is that you can create a dangerous situation that could be out there for a long time. And it may not be dangerous to anyone else but yourself, but you know what? Big brother's gonna watch you because it has to, because we have codes to enforce when you do construction. That's that's a reality. So there's, that's the first argument for having the some form of a deadline on when the work should be complete and how many renewals you get to do it. Are there enforcement issues when you head down that road? There could be. There there always could be. But you pull a building permit application, then the building inspector has an invite to come in and come take a look and see what you're doing. You've waived that. You can't come in. That's gone. You you ask for permission to to build something. We have the right to come in and make sure you're doing a safe job to protect yourself and then the future homeowner or whoever, whoever else is gonna come onto the property.
But is that like, is that a question of time? Over a period of time?
Well.
The the safety thing, because it sounds like if you're if you've got a building inspector who's going and they're aware that the situation is safe, they're gonna be doing that whether this is a job that you've been working on for two years or twenty years, like that's.
Yeah, but how many times is the building inspector gonna come along and have to be responsible to do that? That that's that's.
I I don't know. I I I don't know. I mean, that's if that's part of the, is that part of the renewal process?
Well, it would be if you, if you may, yeah, it would it would get caught up in.
And is that, I guess, and my question is, is that part of the new renewal process now?
If someone comes in, if they're in in the midst of construction and their building permit expires and they come in and and
Mm-hmm.
need to have a renewal issued.
Mm-hmm.
It's, do you go back out and inspect? You have the authority to. I I guess the question is what's going on, right?
Well, first of all, we're talking, uh, right now, we're on a six-month uh permit. If in the process of um the inspections required under a permit are are being accomplished, I know where they are when they come to me.
But up until very recently, you have been issuing one-year permits and issuing renewals. So so.
Right, and they still, they still come to me.
You you know what those instances are more likely to occur is gonna be on your commercial renovations. That that's that's where it's where they're gonna be more
Mm-hmm.
likely where you're gonna have the multiple inspections as opposed to, let's say, you just want to redo your dormer and you happen to need a building permit to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, you did half of it, but you didn't do the other half. Um, you're you're a at the end of the day, right? You can, no one's saying that that you absolutely have to have a cap, but there there is a benefit to it because there's some finality.
Mm.
And the.
All right, we're halfway to the decision. Length of cap.
Look to you guys.
I mean,
Two.
two, sounds good to me. Done, decision made.
So. One year permit.
What, that was what was on this when we approved the rates? Why, how did it happen?
That was a mistake.
The the law didn't, the law doesn't provide for that, that's why.
That was a mistake.
Right.
How many renewals are received, how many renewal requests are received per year and in is this a big thing, a little thing? A nonexistent thing?
It's only a big thing if it happens to you, I guess.
Pardon me?
Only it's a big thing when it happens to you, seriously.
Yeah, okay, but the the question is on the table. There are X number of building permits issued each year.
So.
I don't know the answer.
There are X Y number of
Renewals.
of projects that are completed each year. How many of the building permits that are issued each year require renewal and are in fact renewed?
Uh, we, it's another thing to figure out. If they bother to renew it, and then 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 they get caught.
Well, if they don't bother to renew it, why are we having this discussion?
Where is the enforcement?
You know, come on.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the question, the question is, does go to enforcement, right? So if we're going to.
Yeah, so if we're gonna, it doesn't matter if you're gonna renew for three months or six months or a year. You have to enforce whatever, the first thing is to enforce whatever your renewal policy is now. And then once you do that, then you can talk about changing your length of of permit and and renewal. But if you don't enforce it today, changing it from three months to one year doesn't make a hell of a difference.
No, it's.
Well, it does make a difference to the people who do apply.
Right.
And so if people do.
They have more comfort.
Well, yeah, because they're.
Because they're not renewing now.
Well, but if they do, if they do renew and if they are renewing now.
Right. If they do.
If they do, right.
Renewals.
I like what the board's discussing. I think it makes sense to cap it. There's only one. If you don't cap it, that person hypothetically could build everything on the inside and the building inspector doesn't know. They constantly renew, well, they cost renew it. So that's property that should have been taxed at full value. It's not being taxed. So forget about the hundred dollars where it would cost to renew. There's a lot of tax dollars are being wasted, not not obtained.
Well, but that that assumes that the person is, I mean, that that is, that's in a scenario where somebody is coming to renew. I mean, that's that's.
No, no.
They're not renewing and just gonna keep keep upgrading without renewal.
Just us.
But if they don't renew and we don't have somebody who's enforcing it.
Right, set the set the law and enforce the darn thing.
Then.
But but isn't.
Well, that's the question. I mean, I think that goes to our one of the underlying questions.
Doesn't the assessment get, doesn't the assessment get enacted at the time of the application of the building permit?
No, no.
When does it, when does it get enforced?
Actually, get your CEO about.
I I I beg to differ with you.
Let let me just clarify when assessment.
That's not true. Go, I I did an add, I did an addition and I my assessment was increased.
Did you finish?
I seen they'll do that, take that for the application.
Increased in midstream.
Application.
Yeah, they're not, they're not supposed to. Your your.
They were picking on you.
But this is the town, the town and and the bills taxes and the and the school taxes are based upon what the town does.
They were singled out.
When my building application went in, there was an associated value for the addition. And six months after the uh, six months after the um uh after the permit was issued, my taxes increased. And I grieved because I wasn't anywhere near completed. And so they lowered my tax assessment for that tax year. But the following year, to the best of my knowledge, without ever determining whether or not I had completed the project, it went up to full value. So I I think the assessment argument based upon the way the town does their tax assessments is not a valid argument. I if if.
There's precedence for the opposite as well, Marie. It's just, it comes down to enforcement and who's doing the assessment.
The the assessments occur as follows.
Well.
On March one, the temporary assessment rule is prepared, which identifies an assessment of your property based on its condition as of July one, the year before. And that's what the law requires.
And so the building permit.
If you applied for a building permit on June thirtieth
During February, that's right.
and you said you were gonna make a one hundred thousand dollar improvement, all right?
It was. It goes out.
Um, it shouldn't go up unless you've done that work within a day, which everyone knows you, it's not possible. But the assessors take liberties to increase.
Right.
Okay.
Which should be challenged because that's not fair.
So the way the way you had had written is twelve months, um, with two additional.
Two additional periods of twelve months upon application, right, instead of one.
Just to clarify, every building permit goes to the assessor.
Oh, yeah, there's there's no question about that.
Yeah, so they're made aware of it. When they actually do their assessment, it's based upon what the town does.
I'm just saying what they're supposed to do.
You know, I'm saying, no, but they are made aware of it. Every, uh, as the permits are issued, they're made aware of it and then they pursue it based upon the, I assume, the completion. Okay, that's not something we handle, but we do make the the.
They they don't wait for completion.
Okay, so.
It's not mine.
Jim, wait.
Um, I want to point out that the town of uh Phillips Town has issued two-year permits. Um, and you may just want to consider having it aligned with the town, especially when we're talking about assessments.
This is a straight two years or a one and a one?
No, it's two years for the for the initial and I don't recall, I thought I saved it on my phone, but uh the there there are renewals and I I don't recall the years. There's one or two year renewals without limitations.
Sure.
What what in this proposal, what happens if there's a one-year permit and and two renewals after that? What happens after that time period?
Reapply.
Completely reapply.
Mm-hmm.
And and during this time too, obviously, no one can legally occupy it without a CBO, right? So there's an enforcement issue there.
It it depends what you're building.
Well, but if you, right, exactly. If you're just doing siding, if you're just doing. Well, but if you, right, exactly. If you're just doing siding, if you're just doing internals, right?
Right.
But officially, you're not meant to be occupying it without a C O A. And that's an enforcement.
A little information, because there's a lot of information being thrown around here, some of it's, and some it's not. Is that the, the, the town does, you're right, James, they have a two-year, uh, building permit. That, that may be a way to handle it, is to get a two-year with two one-year renewals and I have a four-year. But the one problem I did have in discussion with the town, because I do coordinate with them as to how they do things versus we do things, um, is that they now would stretch that overview out for two years.
What does that mean? When you say that, I don't, stretch that overview, what is that?
Uh, well, you, the problem, the problem is, is that if in one year, I know somebody's working on a project, I can keep track on it saying, okay, I haven't seen any framing inspection, I haven't seen any insulation inspection. Now we have drawn that out over two years, they have two years to, to kinda draw the project out. That's all. It, it's, it purely, two things, one is safety and second is, um, uh, administration of the building permit and the building code.
Okay.
Doesn't, doesn't a reappry at the end of some cap just increase the administrative burden that your office has to deal with, right?
Well, I think it's.
A permit that you have to go through is more strenuous than a renewal of an existing.
Well, actually, yes, because it means a complete review of the project, okay? However, it also puts a, a, another, uh, financial burden upon that owner. Okay, where they're gonna be paying for it twice. But the problem is, is that, uh, too many people use the, uh, in, in building, uh, use the concept of I'd rather ask for forgiveness than permission. Okay, and too many people go beyond their permits and then come to me and say, oh, mine. Now, I think, you know, you have quite a bit of, a mixture of people here that are in the construction, you have architects, you have builders. Is what do other municipalities do? My experience, by, I'm an architect, but my experience is one-year building permits. Uh, in the, in the suburban communities, not in New York City, not a big city, uh, with the one-year, two one-year renewals. That's why when I came in here and I saw that, figured that's what we did. But that's, what other experiences have we come across and how do they work? I mean, James, you worked in other communities, what is New Burton? What is, uh?
I, I believe it's a one-year permit.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say it's from town to town, it's different because of the way it has to be administered, okay? I, it's not really fee-based, okay? Fee-based and all that is to keep people honest.
Well, if you, the, you, you agree that it, it creates a financial burden for the owner and so is that, is that something we're trying to do here?
No, I think you're also trying not to create a financial burden for the municipality either, which is borne by all the taxpayers.
Well. Oh, what is the, I'm sorry, what, the, if having to, as, as, um, Matt asked, he, he asked, is it, is it not an administrative burden to ask an applicant to reapply entirely, right?
Well, for the applicant as well as for the building department.
Right, but, oh, right, is that not an administrative burden to the building department and you said, uh, yes, it is, and you said it, it also is a financial burden on the owner? And I'm, and I'm asking the board, are we, are the, are, are we, are we wanting to increase a financial burden on the applicant? And, and do we, by making these changes, and do we want to add an administrative burden to the building department by making these changes?
Well, that's why I said one of the options might be is to give a two-year permit somewhere to the town and give one, one-year renewals, that's four years. If you can't build your house in four years or you can't do your, uh, your commercial work, uh, there's something wrong. Okay, uh, it might be financial, it may never get done, okay? There may be issues there, uh, that, the building code. The other thing to keep in mind, uh, the codes change. Okay, and right now, we're ready for a code change. So the two thousand and.
We're talking the state building codes, everybody's.
State building. Uh, the codes are two thousand and ten, which is really the two thousand and six, which is now we're gonna adopt the two thousand and fifteen apparently in the state. So what happens is, is that the further you push it out, the less compliant in the code it may be, even though it was approved.
Um, I think the two-year permits and two one-year renewals makes a lot of sense in a community like Cold Spring where actually some of the projects, house projects are fairly complicated and take a while, as I can speak to.
Especially if you do it yourself.
I think, I think, exactly. I, I think though, some of, another issue is putting, making the H D R B, uh, approval in sync with the building permit. I think to have it at a one-year and to have two years or three months or six months, have some different period, doesn't make any sense at all. It should be made in exact, it should be made in sync, including the renewals, by the way. There should be a parallel, uh, schedule for both, uh, for both permits.
So two, two-year and two one-years, I mean, eleven?
Twenty-four months and two one-years?
Is that something, I guess?
I mean, what is the H D R B one, right, man?
I think it's one year.
H D R B is a two-year.
Two years to get a building permit? You have to finish in one year, so you have three years, you have two years to get the permit after you get your.
Just to make that concurrent, it would be stay with one year with two one-year renewals. Like we were talking.
No, it would be two years.
It, it would say.
Right, because they had two years.
H D R B would say, get your permit within two years, finish construction within two years.
And then just have one renewal, so that it's.
So it's, so they're a total of three.
Right now, they're free.
So wouldn't that make sense for us?
So do a two-year permit with one, one-year renewal. That way they're the same and if we have to revisit it, if they change.
No, but they, they start at, but they start, they start at different staggers. I mean, it's true, they're, but that would be both three years, but they started different staggers. H D R B, you have two years to get your building permit and you have one year and thereafter, one year thereafter, they, the, the C of A will expire.
To get a C O A.
So if we have.
So then there's no way to really make them completely.
There is.
Actually, though.
You can tie them together.
Yeah, but it's timed together.
You can tie them together.
No, just what you do is once you get a C O A, it ties in with the concrete building permit. And when the building permit expires, the C O A expires.
They do.
The same thing.
The other thing too is, is that in fairness to the residents, you may get, uh, as many people have done here, because I recognize course faces, they've got their C, C O A, okay? And then they had a Z B A case pending on top of it, so that may take a little bit longer. So if, say, if the, the C of A was approved in January, the Z B A may not have been able to, uh, complete their case till March, okay? Now they, they already lost two months. So the best way to do it would be to take the, um, H D R B approval to C O A and make it just concurrent with the, the applicable building permit.
Would it make sense to do that with the, the, some, the variances also, the timing of the variances, that the, the expiration clock start, is sort of restarted once you get your building permit, so you have, so if we're doing two-year permits, if we're doing two-year building permits, we would have, you would have, once you get your permit, you would have two years to work on your place and not have to chase an expired C of A and the variance.
Right now, I believe, um, that the law requires that you obtain a building permit for, uh, after the grant of a variance within twelve months.
Right.
I need to just confirm whether or not, um, there's anything in village law that prevents us from extending that. If, if, if there isn't anything that prevents it, then we can make all of it consistent.
Mm-hmm. So should we hold off now until we get the, the.
There, there's a, there's no, there's a deadline on, um, on.
So, okay, so. So, so, can, yeah, seriously, can we, can we, can we get that in line and then decide then?
All three quarters to the.
And I think the only thing, the only requirement we need to do on this one is that the permit must be applied for.
After one year.
You got it in a period of time with the final.
Yeah, after one year, that, your permit, then, um, it gets up to you.
Yes.
So, um, I just checked on the town, uh, permit and it is, it's a twenty-four month permit on, the work must start within six months of the issuance of that permit or, or else that expires. Um, and it, uh, it just says, and it shall be renewed, renewed, you know, within a certain time period, um, and it doesn't limit the renewals. So I, the assumption is that it's another twenty-four month, uh, permit without limitation.
Okay.
Um, I, I suggest that the, the village be in, uh, you know, is in sync with the town since that's what our taxes are assessed on, so I, I think that's a fair thing to consider.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll try to get everybody lined up, H R B zoning us into town and then come back and discuss it again.
Um. So right now, for our purposes though, we're, we're entertaining the idea of a two-year or a, a twenty-four month permit
Mm-hmm.
and two additional twelve months. Renewal?
Yeah.
We're entertaining.
Entertain, right, entertaining.
Right, I just wanted to make note of where, where we are in this discussion now.
I sort of, I sort of grant contract.
And, oh, wait, wait, before we move on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Before we move on, in July, we adopted these, uh, this fee schedule.
Yes.
Do we want to, because our, our permitting timeframe is only six months, do we want to revise this fee schedule to cut it in half? Because I think the fee schedule is, it, the assumption is it's based on an annual building permit.
How long is it gonna be before we resolve the issue?
Um, well, I mean, obviously, we should.
The, uh, if I may interject.
Of course.
The, uh, building permit, uh, price is kinda tough to change because it is based upon, uh, the square footage of the project and, uh, a follow-up fee. It's, and it's minimal, it's, it's the probably the cheapest building, the building permit in the area. Where I think it's onerous and I have to agree with the trustee of organs, this is that the hundred dollars every three months is a little steep. Uh, I mean, if it's, uh, if it's gonna stay three months, maybe the answer is you have to bring, but then you have to go through the whole process of public hearing and everything else again, I believe.
No, no, you can do the fee schedule by resolution.
No, we don't have to, we do this by resolution.
Okay, well, then maybe the answer is to bring it as long as it's a three-month. Maybe to bring it down to fifty and then, uh, that would be, uh, it'd still be more than would be if it was a one-year, but it's less onerous than, uh.
Why would we not, why would we not reduce it to twenty-five since it's a quarter, I mean?
It, it just means that, um, the paperwork generated by that renewal is not, uh, being.
It's not worth your while, that's what you said.
No, it's not, no, we're not being covered, we're not being covered for the, our time to take right now.
So Linda Evangeline's done a building inspector.
Yeah. And would make it incentive to get this resolved quickly.
Okay, okay.
So are we, are we gonna revise the per, permit renewals and the permit?
I think we'd absolutely revise them when we decide what the perm, the, the, or revising what's current.
Yeah, I mean, these are, the, the ones that we updated in July assumed a twelve-month permit, correct? So we've got application, we've got, um, permit fees, um, this minimum is seventy-five dollars, but that's based on the assumption that this is for one year. But this isn't for one year, we do them for six months and with three-month renewals. And then the renewal fee is a hundred dollars, but again, that's based on the assumption that it's twelve months. That seems like it should be less, and I take your point about twenty-five dollars not being worth the, can't buy anything, can't buy a renewal for twenty-five bucks now. So, um, do we wanna cut these in half? So that permit fees are thirty-seven fifty and renewals are, their six-month permit fees are thirty-seven fifty and renewal fees are fifty dollars? Three-month renewals are fifty dollars?
Mike, how fast, I mean, can we look at all these things and come up with the right timeframe, if it's just in?
Well, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to amend your law, which is, you're gonna require a public hearing, the law's gonna have to sit on your desk for, for, you know, five days and.
And we have to loop with the H D R B and with the Z B A about these changes?
Uh, you could, you don't have to. Uh, we all know where that goes.
We could be autocrat and just update the law.
Right, right. Um, I, I think it, it, it's worthwhile for you to, for the people that might get caught up in the, having to pay the money for the renewals while the, the current section of the code is in enforcement, is being enforced as is. Uh, I think it's probably easier for you guys to just resolve to, um, fix the fee schedule, we could do that right now, and then we'll go back to, we, we, we'll readjust it as needed later.
I make a motion to adjust the fee schedule to reflect the six-month permit process.
And three-month, with three months.
And three-month renewal.
Second.
Discussion? Hold up a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, can I interject something here, James? What are we reducing it to?
Team A.
I don't, I didn't hear any numbers.
Okay, what, okay, we, we redo it, motion to.
Just, just do a new motion.
I make a motion to adjust the fee schedule, uh, to halve the amounts to reflect the six-month permits and then.
That's thirty-seven fifty?
The.
Yes.
You know what, I rescind my motion, by all means, go ahead.
No, no, no.
No, 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 go.
I'm agreeing with you, but keep going, I'm cheering you on.
No, go. You had all of the numbers.
Why is that not gonna work?
The reason it's not gonna work is because what happens is, is that those fees are based upon the effort it takes to, uh, institute a building permit. That's what the seventy, the seventy-five was there for, the, uh, formation of the, any referrals, uh, instituting, uh.
It's the renewals, right? That's the issue.
Yeah, the, the renewals are the issue, the cost of the permit is basically the cost of the permit.
Let's make a resolution to make the renewals an X.
Renewals, you can do whatever you want.
Whatever, whatever that X is.
No, you make the renewal, you make the money for the renewal, for the renewals.
Yeah. For, for renewal, I have no problem with fifty dollars for, for renewals.
Fifty-dollar renewals?
Catherine?
Thirty dollars, fifty dollars.
Make a motion.
Set the renewal fee for the months at fifty dollars.
Thirty-nine ninety-four.
Secondly.
Aye.
Discussion. Hold up a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I sort of grant. How did we do?
I think at this stage of the game, it's, the committee needs to read through this and get back to us with their thoughts on it. Uh, the one question I had was, in some of the earlier drafts, in terms of the twenty-five amendments, you were using the word considered and it's now prepared.
Exactly.
Has that?
Yeah, that, that's the language that NYSERDA, um, has prescribed for us, so that's, you know, the whole discussion around, um, that we originally had with them in the spring, um, they said, you don't have to adopt them. But this is, these are, this is the process that you need to go through to have access to this grant. So that includes, so it wasn't more, it wasn't just considered, they wanted us to actually prepare the documentation and.
It's still prepare, not adopt.
Pre- prepare, we, we don't, we're, the require, there's no requirement to adopt, it's, the requirement is to prepare, um,
Oh.
And the, the numbers of the, the, Mary has put up on the zoning update committee portion of the website, the relevant documents. Um, and it includes the, the statement of work, but not the general contract provisions and the Ps and Cs and the prompt pay policy and, um, all of this, this background.
The fact that you can't import bamboo, um, as part of the terms and conditions.
Right. So exhibit A, where the substance of our obligations are, um, that, that's been marked up here in, in red line, um, or the comparison document. Uh, that you see here is what has been changed since we saw it in July, I think it was July sixteenth. Um, and the zoning update committee has this document and they will be assembling on Thursday evening, um, to org, to take care of their own organizing, um, and they will start reviewing this. They are unlikely to have, you know, completed comments to us about this. Um, so I've let NYSERDA know that that's the process we're going through. I told them we were gonna be talking about this tonight and that I would bring back to them any comments that we have about the document. I don't know if you guys have, um, had any, in addition to what we've already looked at, um.
Well, I, I, I just, I think that we've got this thing down to, um, more comfortable feeling for us, and I, I know for myself, I'm, I'm very excited to hear what the, the new committee has to. So I think it's fair that we adopt something that they're happy that we adopted for them and not something that they're gonna work on that they don't like.
Right.
Yes, Marie?
Uh, a, a clarification, uh, in the, um, S O W, it talks, it defines contractor team. I want clar, I want to get your clarification. A, a contractor team is the V B O T or the liaison, the identified liaison from the V B O T? This is in, uh, second paragraph, definitions, first one.
A contractor team, a contractor, shall consist of the contractor. Well, the, is it not? The contractor team is a constellation of, um, the, the, would be the constellation of the village board, the volunteers on the code update committee and any consultants that we would hire.
Right. So contractor there is V B O T.
The contractor is the, the village board.
V B O T, or, because contractor is identified as being, uh, attendees or participants in many different things. So my interpretation was it was either the V B O T or the liaison to the committee from the V B O T, is that?
Right, and I think in, in the, in time, we will wanna appoint somebody to participate in this in a more full capacity as the liaison, um.
And although we've not had any discussions with NYSERDA, it seems as if a, an appropriate concept to discuss with them at this point is to separate, they, they talk about three things in these statements, one. And always the three things together. The zoning code changes.
Mm-hmm.
The zoning code changes, the zoning map, and the H D R B changes. And it seems that since the H D R B appears to be further along in what they are expected to do as part of the statement of work. When you talk with Nicerta, would it be possible to float to them the concept that we might be able to do the, the zoning code and the zoning map as one task with one schedule, s, public hearings, blah, 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 blah? And the H D R B separated with all of the same set of meetings that they need, public hearings that they need, amendments that they need? Just not tie the three, the two of them.
We, we had that comment, we had that exact.
Oh, oh, okay.
We did, we had that exact conversation.
Oh, okay.
We, yeah, we, we did it.
Great minds.
And, um.
Yes.
Now, look, I, I left my office and I was photocopying signed code provisions, and I left my Nicerta photo folder on my copy machine, but there's a, a particular, um, basically task set that's set forth in, I think, Article Two. And what, what we did was, Stefan and I had talked to Nicerta, and we said, it, it was, you know, actually more, not, not just likely, but more than likely that the H D R B would finish their aspect way before the zoning committee would, would finish.
Right.
And, and they said to, um, uh, to simply set that forth, who, and it would identify the contractor, the team that would be working on it, the H D R B and, and their consultant.
Right, right.
And then, um, and then whatever they did, let's say their public hearing, their meetings, would be credited towards the overall.
Great.
And when we said, all right, you know, is it worth it to now take the time to reconstruct, break it out, lay it out in, in the contract, they said, no, our next round of grants are gonna come in in thirty days, and you're gonna be long forgotten, we're not gonna negotiate this thing any further.
Gotcha.
So.
You take what you want, leave it as it is.
Right.
And then you tell us that your H D R B is gonna do it separate.
Right.
And we'll acknowledge an amendment.
Great.
And that's where we left off.
One last thing, this talks about, um, a webinar or a workshop where.
Yes.
But that was the third quarter, so it's, it appears as if it's done.
Right. Right, there, um, that is, uh, that's actually on Thursday. I got an email today, and I told them that the zoning, the code update committee will be meeting on Thursday, and, um, because they give you the option of doing it offline, you can do it live or you can do it offline, and I said that I would be speaking with the update committee
Great.
and explaining that this is part of the, you know, the training that the code update committee will wanna participate in and that it will be available offline, and so Nicerta is gonna make that available. So whenever the code update committee is, you know, ready to, ready to do that, that information will be perfectly available, so.
Great. Thank you. Great.
Okay, we're looking forward to hear what, uh, you folks have for us.
Thank you, Marie.
Great, thank you. Correspondents? Yes, please.
We have a couple of these, um, along with the, uh,
Huh?
Food pantry, for the food pantry, the Phillips Town Food Pantry. We'd like to do an event, uh, for friends of Phillips Town Food Pantry with support from the Cold Spring Lions and Saint Mary's Church. So there are a lot of turkey trots, so this is called gobble. And I can send you some copies on it.
The gobble has a plan.
Uh, it's basically all, you bring a frozen turkey, run a certain walk, crawl a certain path, and the turkey gets donated to the food pantry. So, um, there's a mapped out route, and, uh, the Lions Club was very enthusiastic about it last night and is offering the umbrella of their insurance for the event. Uh, it would require the closing of Wall Street. So, this is a map.
For when and for how long?
It would be on Saturday, November fifteenth, from Saint Mary's Lawn at eight thirty in the morning and finish at ten thirty.
Until what do you have then?
Eight thirty to ten thirty.
So the road would be closed?
Just two hours, two hours. It's, no, the only road close is Wall Street, in, in between the church.
Right, and.
So, um.
What do we need to do for?
Yeah, we'll give this to, uh, the P D.
Uh. Yeah, enter on the P D, and, um, it's basically gonna stay on the sidewalks.
In the.
Um, yeah. And then, Barbara has some, she has some flyers.
As we know, um, the holidays are coming up, and the food pantry's usage is way up. And this is a way to replenish their, their pantries. You come to the lawn at nine o'clock in the morning with a frozen turkey. You can dress this frozen turkey up, you can carry it, you can push it, but you race around and come in and you donate your turkey to the pantry. Children are encouraged to come, they can run with chickens.
Do you, do you carry the turkey as you run?
You can carry, yes, you carry it, or you push it in a stroller, or you put it in a backpack, you dress it up. You name it, like you donate it, so, it's a great event. They have this event in Peekskill every year, and it's, it's, it's a super, super way to bring the folks to the food pantry and get them stocked with turkeys and chickens for the holidays coming up. I have flyers, I will distribute, and I'm hoping the board will all bring a turkey and dress up.
Sure.
Dress the turkey.
Uh, November fifteenth.
Since for correspondence, we'll, we'll get that, yeah, there should be no problem, we'll just run it by the P D, I don't, I don't see reason. Actually, if you guys want to adopt that without.
Yeah, I don't have the certificate of insurance, uh, so I can, I shouldn't be buying.
Okay, you know, I mean, I'm just gonna motion to, um, approve with the, so we have insurance and, um, it's okay by police.
With the, um, motion to approve the closing of Wall Street.
Did, did, I think, yeah, I think support, support the event journal with the closing.
Because I've got this on and around.
Oh, right.
Solid.
Okay, so moot.
Second it.
Any discussion? Hold on a favor?
Aye.
Did you get a chance to put the I M A?
I did.
This is the final?
That's what I sent to Mary.
Did you guys get a chance to?
Wait, did you say you did or you didn't?
No, 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 I, I drafted the I M A and, but it has to be reviewed by the county.
Okay.
It's just, just the version that I drafted.
Okay, Barbara, are you aware of this, the intermunicipal agreement for the multimodal and in return, okay, so.
Motion. Yes.
Right, we need that really quickly, can we get that for you?
You can have it now and take it to them too.
Yeah. Yeah. You guys have any?
Barbara, is there an attorney in particular at the county law department that you know would work on it? You can take this with you tonight, I just didn't know if maybe Andy or, or someone in particular would be the person to correspond with.
Well, if you took, um, talk to Fred Penna, and he'll direct you, Andrew Negro usually does most of the, the I M A, so, maybe he would be good.
Okay. Okay.
Call Andrew.
Okay.
Just for information, uh, we, a multimodal project, which is a funding that we're doing for drainage, uh, nine D and Frankside, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we cannot do the project for that price. Um, you know, we were trying to do it ourselves and use contractors to help, and they weren't willing to bid, it was just something that was getting really, um, uh, out of our, out of our reach, out of our scope. Former Mary Anthony Phillips was working on a project, 'cause he had originally started the grant, mm, five and a half years ago. Uh, so when it came across our desk again, I, I asked him if he could, um, further along his project, 'cause he had pretty much written the grant. He had reached out, um, his contacts with the county, and, uh, what had happened is the county said, um, what we'll do is we'll do the project for you. In return, um, we'll plow, uh, ask if we would plow, um, American Legion for the senior center and the sheriff substation, which happens to be outside the village, but because, um, it's an intermunicipal agreement, and, um, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar project, and we only had twenty-five thousand dollar for, so it was tremendous savings for us. So we are, we're just updating the intermunicipal agreement, it's only a one year agreement. So if we feel that we had a ton of snow that equals that project, we do have the, um, ability to, to fail out. Um, but, you know, we don't foresee that happening, um, so that's, this is in today. Signed a paperwork to transfer, um, the multimodal grant from the village to the county, so now the county's getting that grant to do the project for us.
So, will we, um, once this is reviewed by the county and comes back to us, will we then vote on accepting the agreement, is that how it works? Okay.
So, you don't.
Barbara needs it.
Barbara neither.
From county estimation, this is gonna cost around seventy-five thousand.
Uh, correspondence?
Uh, Ralph, I wanted to, uh, I spoke with Bob Bigford.
Oh, okay. Was it Bob Bigford or Bob Bigford from?
Yeah, yeah, um, so I spoke at our last meeting, um, we discussed forming a code of ethics, and we had extensive and lively discussion. And, uh, we decided that before we formed ethics com, committee under chapter nine, um, that we would talk with Bob Bigford. And, um, so I followed up with Bob Bigford and, um, told him that we, we had this chapter nine, um, ethics code of ethics in our, um, in our book. And that we were contemplating forming a board. And he said, um, and I said, we'd like you to come and, and speak with us, and he said, uh, you know, he, he wasn't available to come speak with us, uh, within the month. And he said, look, he said, the village should, should move ahead and should appoint its board of ethics. You have your chapter nine, and that will be the extent of their jurisdiction. That group should meet with the village attorney, and I would be, and, and Bob said that he would be happy to join that discussion and, um, participate in that, um, those initial conversations with that, uh, board of ethics, so. So, so with that, and reflecting on what we discussed last week, I would like to make a motion that we appoint a board of ethics. Um, and advertise for it in usual places.
Second it, but under discussion, I think we voted on that last week.
No, we didn't, well, we, we, we got very close, and then we, and then we rescinded.
I'll be voting on it, and then we discussed it, and then rescinded the motion that we voted on.
We didn't, no, we didn't, we didn't vote, you, we, we didn't get the vote, we discussed.
Either way, I second.
Under discussion? What was the, uh, did town, Mike, did town, Mike, town superintendent, what did he say about the code of ethics? Appoint people that are gonna, uh, be able to take me down, kind of thing. And when, well, we, vote for somebody, appoint somebody that's gonna be able to come out to me every time they don't like what I say.
Right, right, exactly.
No.
Well, and that should be the criteria to be included in the, the advertisement.
Yes, you were just, you were appointed.
Oh.
No, I, I mean, I, 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 there's, I think there's great value in going down that road of, of, you know, giving the public the guarantee that we're willing to, to, you know, appoint our peers to keep an eye on us.
And also.
And I fully support.
Do, I just wanna clarify, there is a board, it is just not staffed, okay? So you have a board of ethics, there's just no one on it, so your motion should be to advertise for those positions.
Oh.
No, it's wrong.
Okay.
It's wrong with that, you know what, I'm good.
All right, so we have to rescind our motion, and then try again?
Your, your motion is to advertise for positions on the board of ethics.
So I retract my earlier motion to create the board, and now I'm making a new one. Do you have to rescind your second?
Same.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we advertise for, uh, appointments to the board of ethics, the village board.
Second.
Under discussion, hold on a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They serve at the pleasure of the village boards, when you don't like them, you can give them, okay, it says that right here.
That's what they did in Albany.
What a heck of a circle that is.
Are we gonna talk about cemetery?
Oh, yeah, that's. The, um, signage?
So.
The last, the signage for the, were we going to look at this, we, the, for the, um, for the merch? Is that?
Did you look at this letter? This was the letter we discussed, that, um, Mary had prepared in con, in consultation with Bill about the placing of merchandise and signage, but there was a question as to whether you could, we could govern signage seeing as how placards and signs, chapter one oh four, is not enforceable.
Right, we.
So if the answer's no, then the answer's no.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, guys.
So the answer's no?
The answer is no.
No, that's fine, we just, we weren't sure, that's why we didn't do it last week.
Yeah.
So, okay, sorry, we, we're not, so we're not issuing that letter?
I did, until it's reviewed.
Yeah, until it's correct.
All right, okay.
We can do the merchandise on sidewalks, cleaning of sidewalks.
So next, next week?
Uh, you know what, hold on, it, it's, it is okay, because it, um, if you recollect, it was on chapter sixty-four that was an issue. The final judgment in Musk said, chapter sixty-four does not violate the First Amendment, so you're chapter sixty-four as it, as it is in place. And this is just a recitation of what's in it.
Okay.
It's fine.
But then, but then, um, down in merchandise, chapter one oh eight dash twenty-four B, number three refers to merchandise and signage.
Must be removed by nine P M. and displayed no earlier than eight A M. All right, hold on, so our one oh eight, that case did not, it, it dealt with one thirty-four and, and one oh four, not one oh eight.
And one oh four. So we're good.
It should be just fine.
Okay.
Motion to approve the letter?
Any discussion? Hold on a favor?
Aye.
Heard. The, how about, let's do, uh, election day, meet, not meet.
Meet?
On election day?
Oh, I don't know, not meet.
You shouldn't meet.
Don't meet.
You should not meet.
No, I believe.
No meeting next week? We can't, the third, we have court, okay, no meeting on the fourth.
Do you have an update from the planning board?
The, uh, I was waiting to speak to, uh, one of, one of the members was on vacation. So I do have a couple more pieces of information that I, I still didn't have to collect. Um, I have, you know, as I promised, working on that, and, um, I will absolutely get findings, um, as soon as I nail down the last person.
Thank you.
Okay.
Parking?
Uh, parking?
We met on Monday, and, uh, the parking committee would like permission for Anthony Phillips and Bob Vars to work with Eddie Tremble on removing the non-codified signs previously submitted, which was, um, slow, slow play area. There, just a lot of, they're redundant, I think everybody had a copy of them, and then they can recirculate if you want, but, um.
What, what signs are, are they, they're moving?
There's like.
And where? Did, did you send a list of everything?
Um, yeah, I gave you those a while back.
I don't think I sent a list.
Um, Main Street from nine D, remove the speed limit signs, remove slow play area, Fair Street, Downing Avenue, remove the speed limit signs. Apparently, I don't know if there's, if they're fifteens or twenty-fives, but, uh, Northern Avenue, remove the speed limit sign. You cannot remove the stop sign, because that is in the code. Remove the no parking anytime sign, uh, remove children at place on Church Street, Garden Street, remove sign, speed limit sign. Rock Street, remove no parking sign from Rock to Campbell, the Boulevard, remove the speed limit sign. Campbell Avenue, remove no parking this side at the end of Campbell. Lund Terrace, remove the speed limit signs, and install, um, there's, I have to talk to them about this, but there, the, the parking spaces, it's either gonna, we want to either change it on the path with the one driver, or make signs, but I don't, I'd rather not.
Stop and park.
Yeah, exactly, well, it's, so that's off the table. Uh, the Boulevard needs a winter parking sign with timing, perhaps?
I'm sorry, we adding there, not being away?
These are added. Campbell Avenue, install a parking to corner at Wall Street before wall, apparently that's done. Um, Furnace Street, add no parking, corner to Main, and Lund Terrace, add no U-turn at the Main Street intersection.
Can.
I can send these to you.
Yeah, can we, can we actually discuss these at a workshop and sort of have, maybe, can the parking committee provide us with some, you know, like a, I don't know, like a justification memo of why, why the, like, the problem that it's being.
There's just, there's so many signs.
Right, I, I understand that, but they were put there for a reason by somebody at one time, and, um, and that way people who live in these.
Probably one of you guys is removing half of them.
And that way people who live in these neighborhoods who might think that they are a benefit, or, or maybe want additional signs removed, can come and participate.
Also, if you're gonna add, then I think we need to amend the, the, uh, the code. Excuse me, to make them enforceable. Otherwise, the police department won't have the authority, if you get a ticket for a sign that's not set forth in the code, you just claim that there's no authority, and they'll have to dismiss it.
And I'd like to know why we took the wrong.
Yeah.
They really only want to address the signs that are not in, in code. Um, because we have to do a public hearing, and at some point, we'll have a more strategic plan on that, but, you know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Present a parking permit, and then signage, that could. Present a parking permit and then signage, somewhere it's four, somewhere it's five, it's kind of helterscepter. Um they would also like to recommend the removal of the parking spaces now on the north side of the street uh based on the improved number of spaces, increased number of spaces on the south side.
Have we, I mean, have there been any, have there, are there any other results other than positive?
Uh, if, of the power. Yeah, yeah, um there's always, I mean, when it's busy, right? When uh by powers and hard, there are always four cars instead of three. At the firehouse, course from there, always four uh instead of three. Um.
And no problems?
No, I mean, people who can parallel park can and.
Those who can, they shouldn't.
It's a walking village.
Yeah, so I mean, I think with the the signs, it's a quick note of why they think that one should be removed.
Um.
Cause like the someone, you know, to hear someone say, well, removing speed limits, you're like, but there's either.
Do you know, there's, you can't enforce the fifteen, there's no, it's, can't be below twenty-five anyway.
Exactly, so I mean, if we had that that information helpful rather than just removing speed limit signs.
Uh anyway, so basically in forty-three spaces, we have consistently gotten, you know, about four and five more cars. And if the mix uh includes motorcycles now, they, you know, they'll kind of group together, so before it gets too cold, people will try to find a better color.
Maybe we'll add that to a workshop.
Marie early could not, Susan early could not make the right color. She tried. Probably need one drop of black for it.
The cement color?
I s- I I suggested actually they use that kind of tar that you use on the, when you redo your driveway, you know, you seal your driveway because then it would kind of age like the road, but.
Grind them.
Anyway, so um. We can do that. We can do the by the street, the north side of the street.
Meow.
I think that if it's, if the results have been positive and there've been no negative results, I think there's no reason not to, so do we need, I'd make a motion to.
Yeah, I mean, ironically, I I've got zero complaints, which is kind of really strange.
That's the business you wanna be in.
If it's their recommendation, you're making the motions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just made the motion?
Second.
Aye.
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 Can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
If you, if you have additional space for parking on both sides of the street, you might look at moving the um fifteen minute parking right in front of Harbor Store a little bit further up the hill so we can see around that corner as we make left turns, just an extra five or ten feet.
That's true.
Would be a big help.
Right, so fifteen minute move back.
I almost get teep owned every weekend.
Motion to move the fifteen minute parking space back up the hill.
Can we do that by motion or does that have to be a resolution?
Or.
Uh, hold on.
Making sure.
Should we do it next week?
It's in the village codes, so.
If it's, if if it's set forth in the code as far as the fifteen minute, then we have to fix the code. If it's not, then you can do it by resolution. So if you wanna just, is there anything left on the agenda? I'll take a look really quick.
Pretty sure it's there.
All right, so I'll look while you guys work on the next one.
Okay, the next thing. In line with parking, um. The issue with creation of parking uh along Cedar Street, along the cemetery. I had taken the time myself to ask the highway grad guys to move some boulders to create some uh actual parking up in that neighborhood because uh I am in the opinion of that uh Howding does not fix their problems and their parking just ends uh ends up creeping into that neighborhood, uh being there almost every day for pickup. I see the struggles of the neighbors with people parking in front of their driveways, so of course I wanted leaving garbage. So uh I I personally thought it was a good idea to um move some rocks along cemetery. Um apparently that didn't go over as well as I thought it would as usual, but um still that's, that was the, that was the decision I made and that was the reason I had made it. So uh in my um responsibility to everybody, I was uh you know notified and I had moved them where I thought was a safe distance, further near the road, um which still um wasn't satisfactory. So what we had done is only, you know, the right thing to do was I said that, like everything else, I would investigate and and uh you know, my findings are as such. Uh Mike Bowman and I had met with the Putnam County Cemetery Committee um and they are very, very, very um serious and passionate about their cemeteries. Um they they believe that nobody should park um obviously on or even near, um and they uh, so I'll read their correspondence. Correspondence reports the findings and recommendations of the Putnam County Cemetery Committee. On October twenty-seven, twenty fourteen, meeting was held in the village of Cold Spring in the Putnam County Cemetery Committee. The purpose of the meeting was to ascertain the boundary of the Nelsonville Cemetery and to review the physical condition of the grounds of both the Nelsonville and Cold Spring Cemeteries. The meeting was held on site at the cemeteries. In attendance were Mayor Faloon and trustee Bowman, representing the village of Cold Spring, and Catherine Morgas and Catherine Sepetta, Kathy Sepetta, representing the Putnam County Cemetery Committee. Copies on this correspondence have been sent to the entire Cold Spring Village Board, Phillips Downtown Council, Howden Central School District Board, and all three boards' legal contacts and local media contacts. Putnam County uh Cemetery Committee reports our findings and recommendations are as follows. All of the large boulders located to Nelsonville Cemetery edge have to be moved to the roadway edge in a straight line. The large boulder on top of the mausoleum has to be moved to the roadway. No parking is permitted on cemetery grounds. There are a number of trees which need to be removed for safety reasons. Adequate fencing must be placed around the Nelsonville and Cold Spring Cemeteries to preserve them. As a tribute to Betty Budney, for outstanding community service work at these these historic cemeteries, fencing can be installed. Putnam County Cemetery Committee is honored to serve Putnam County in the preservation of cemeteries for our generation, future ones. Very truly, Catherine Morgas. Um and to the other point, um upon my investigation, um I spoke with Michael Gori and unfortunately for me, um I had no legal authority to move those rocks without permission of the village board. It states in the code that uh all properties uh belong to the village of Cold Spring are governed by the village board, so uh I, again, I had no authority to do it, my apologies, uh and you know, look, we have to do what's right and and make up for uh what was wrong. So with that, uh again, you know, the, there's, there's two issues. There was a set of boulders that were placed there uh nearly ten years ago. I only moved, had four or five moved um at the southernmost section and then in a section which I believe is nowhere near the cemetery, uh and the the highway guys made a fairly large spot for cars to park. Um again, it did absolutely one hundred percent increase parking. Unfortunately, I did not have the right to do so, um and you know, the 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 can of worms that it opened versus the can of worms that it could have opened is is tremendous. One of the things that we could not prove were the actual boundaries of the cemeteries. Um but based on the the sensitive nature of the cemeteries, their age and what's there, um you know, I I don't know that i- it's worth really being concerned about where they are versus, you know, you just, you just need to protect them. So um going forward, um you know, obviously, you know, I'm, you know, more than right thing for me to at least move the ones that I had moved. Um the the problem that I foresee is, you know, creating, because basically what's gonna happen will be zero parking on Cedar now, which there's about, you know, there's about fifteen to twenty cars that park there. Um so I, what I foresee is that's probably twenty more cars that'll be in those neighborhoods, but you you know, um that's twenty cars I don't wanna see there, but at the same time, you know, look, I I, you know,
Can we uh.
a foolhardy desecration of the cemeteries isn't, isn't, isn't.
Foolhardy.
As a quote, that one.
Headline reader.
Yeah.
Can we draft a letter to the uh Howden School?
Sure, sure. And I think that's the right thing to do.
Informing them of what we're doing, we're gonna be eliminating the parking along there.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, it it's mostly the seniors that are parking there. It's, when I was in high school, it was an earned privilege, uh
Sure.
you know, advise them to try to talk to their seniors and not have them park in residential neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Uh if Howding has a parking problem, that's something Howding needs to address. I don't think it's something that we do.
I I I completely agree. Unfortunately, them not addressing it creates for us, but that's something. And the other thing I'd really like to do is, there, I believe there's some spaces up there with with bus markings and and crosswalk and maybe even near the American Legion that, you know, maybe we can go about it the right way and and have the parking committee, um you know, take a look and 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 um you know, see what we can find within our own properties. Um and you know, whether, I mean, I know that um, you know, we created some 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 extra wide lane for buses to maneuver for the school and I think maybe this is a time that we look at them with them and, you know, say, look, you know, look, we need some space too. Um and again, as much as I.
I mean, Howding has room for more parking on their way.
They do, they do.
And uh they have the James Pond and Hill West property that they're, they're trying to unload that could accommodate a pretty sizable parking area.
I completely agree with that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, um do I understand that we still have a cemetery line item?
Six hundred fifty dollars that is in the Mountain Avenue Cemetery.
And it's been in there for eight years or so.
It's been there since it was given to us, sure.
Are we authorized?
Could I make a suggestion? That you were talking about fences and things like that, maybe the village would like to to open up that line item for donations as well? So residents, somebody who's interested, I know I'd be interested donating just for that cemetery if we're, if you're going, if they would be applying it to put back a fence.
Yeah, and you know, one of the positives.
Some good stuff can come out of this, okay?
You know, and for me, you know, look, that's all I got, you know, and and what happened with the cemetery committee and and Mike has even stated, you know, you know, he has 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 some contact with some, you know, very passionate people about, you know, the history of all village cemeteries that he believes would be willing, I mean, you know, the the, it's, it's really, you you know, not looking at it from the cemetery committee's point of view, it's really kind of shameful when when, you know, and again, that's, I was looking to to, you know, take care of the living where they're more concerned with the dead historically. But uh.
The dead don't vote, most of the time.
The dead don't vote, so but like, no, to to their point, when when going through that, you know, you know, it's just, it's a different set of eyes and and you know.
I got it. One other, one other thing was that historically, years back, Mayor Phillips reached out to the school at one time
Mm-hmm.
and he suggested, because they have issues with the fence, the link fence coming down and that.
Yeah.
He also volunteered highway crew to maybe help do that if the school's supplemented on the trees.
Yeah, we did, we did. It was down and we picked it up for them. They said they would and, you know, they didn't get to it. So I mean, I just really think that, you know, between the cemetery, the town, the village, and Nelsonville, the village of Cold Spring, I think maybe it's time to, you know, really address that issue because, you know, when when, you know, looking at it from their point of view, walking around, I mean, I I, you know, I completely got it and and I mean, there was, you know, I mean, we, garbage and I mean, just, you know.
Who, who, is this in, this is Nel- in Nelsonville?
It is the Nelsonville Cemetery. But what happens, the way it's explained to us is.
Cedar Street Cemetery.
Cedar Street Cemetery, but it's got the Nelsonville placard on it. That's what they call it.
Yeah.
The cemetery committee. What happens is when a so a a cemetery is no longer used, no one's buried there anymore, it reverts to to town.
Yeah, when it's no longer used for burials, it reverts to the municipality, in this case, the town. So the town oversees all the abandoned cemeteries in Phillips Town.
And then the Put- Putnam County Cemetery Committee, what they do is they they help raise money and help fund the towns and 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 um.
Are they a private nonprofit?
I don't know.
No, they're a county.
Or are they also?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're county department, yeah, which is probably where they're, where they're getting grant money from, I'm assuming.
County. Okay.
So I I mean, going forward, um.
So this, where where they called for adequate fencing must be placed around the Nelsonville and Cold Spring Cemetery to preserve them, are they, I mean, is that, if these cemeteries have defaulted to the town of Phillips Town, is it the town? Are Phillips Town's responsibility to fulfill the requests of this committee? Is this?
Yeah, I I I, it's funny when I read that, cause I think that was more of, I think that was more of a request.
Or is it a recommendation? It's like a non-binding recommendation?
I think that was, it was more of a recom- recommendation than than a, than a demand. And I think their position was, they think that, you know, based on our conversation, they think, you know, this can happen. They think that all the parties involved would be willing to, so I think what they're saying is, hey, it'd be nice if we could do this, um, you know, cause.
Yeah. Right. Well, if we're gonna.
I think initially what had happened was when Betty Budney was starting to go around and fix a lot of the cemeteries or look for help in fixing them, she came to each municipality and asked for a line item, and I don't know if we've ever actually spent any of ours.
And that's where our six hundred fifty every year, they're very accumulating.
Yeah. And I think they're, they're looking more towards.
Oh, we, we, we used to mow, we used, we used to mow the one cemetery, that's kind, that's kind of why we had that line item.
All right.
And then that kind of disappeared and then they kind of, Betty took the reins. And she did a wonderful job. She reached out to private people too, to help re-erect a lot of these things too, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause fifteen years ago, the money from the cemetery committee was little to nothing. So I I think they were looking for donations into the municipalities themselves to take care of it.
Um so uh going to sort of your original, your original inquiry last week, what you wanted to know where the boundaries were and I guess we don't, we can't know unless we, unless we have uh ground penetrating radar.
I think the.
Yeah, I.
Identify where burials.
I guess, yeah, it's kind of the vault thing that we go to, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and what happens is, is everybody has a different map or a different photo
Right.
and 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 so to tell people about the ground penetrating sonar radar, I I think two things happen. One, be careful what you look for, because unfortunately, if it is places where we don't know, want to believe or think it is, could open that can. I mean, if they're under the road and we find it, you know, you create a problem with their road. And to to the other point, I mean, you know, the way that 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 um folks were buried back in the day, there may truly be nothing left for them to to pick up. I mean, if the headstones are removed, there's likely, um, you know, they weren't built back then, they weren't buried in caskets or anything to that effect, so there may be nothing to pick up, so it could be, you know, one or two things, um, three things costly, um futile at best, uh or troublesome, um in.
Should we prefer to remain in a mysterious cloud of ignorance about where it really is? And we would just prefer to look the other way and not park there?
That's almost as bad as me saying that they care more about the living than dead, so.
Well, I guess that's what I'm going there with the area.
I like to say avoid at all costs. I think that's, that's a little more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, I mean.
I mean, it's not just burial ground that we're we're talking about. I mean, there's a Native American presence in the area and you could really
Yeah, I mean, we came, you know, came across the Fonzamerci headstone or.
stumble upon something that you don't understand.
And wouldn't that be?
Oh, I used to.
To me, it would be.
I mean, that would be very.
Totally, it's been great, but I mean, to the taxpayers who now have to find new housing for the buses, cause Cedar Street's closed, it it's gonna be, it could open up a huge can of worms that I, like Mike said, avoid at all cost.
We're gonna look the other way?
No, no, we're not gonna look at all.
No, we're looking back to the edge of Cedar Street where.
Yeah, I mean, look, here, I made a mistake and we're gonna fix it. How's that?
Good, fine.
Not to mow, not to.
Thank you very much.
Well, um, so.
There, there is a, I mean, I mean, there, there is somebody who lives in town who works for the um, the um company that Nancy Montgomery had emailed us about, um, who could easily come by and sort of assess the area
Yep.
um for a quote and um they said that it was unlikely to cost more than twenty-seven hundred dollars because it's um not a huge, huge area. It would work the same way.
I mean, just from our walk though, the kind of area that we're looking at, just from them walking around, it was increasing exponentially as we walked because they started to look at that structure on the Howden property adjacent to the other cemetery that nobody knows what function it served. And they started asking questions about that and what's under the ground here and.
Is that in the cemetery?
That's in the school, school property.
That's.
It's in on the school property. There's kind of like an embankment that's a rock wall. It looks like a mausoleum.
So that wasn't, that that isn't.
Oh, yes, it is.
But it's outside the cemetery boundaries.
Right, which is the point, is someone else is outside.
I understand your reasoning for doing this. I understand Stephanie's reason as well. To me, a desecration, whether intended or not, is still a desecration.
I don't, what's the, what's the point of that? What's that point?
A lot of people lived here before we, before the country was founded.
You really should consider looking to see where's actually there. If it was your relatives, anyone's relatives, you you probably want that same respect.
And I mean, fixing the the problem that we have right now, like moving the boulders back and getting rid of the, getting rid of the cars doesn't prevent us from doing the ground sonar or whatever we want to do.
Yeah, we don't know what everybody together may, may want, I mean, I just.
I mean.
There's backyards that need ground sonar.
Yeah, well, and that's a good point, you know, who knows?
Well, so do we wanna, I mean, do we wanna continue having a kind of a, you know, a low-grade discussion with the town?
You might find Jimmy off.
Absolutely, I, I think it's.
About, you know, at Nelsonville, about.
Is the town paying for it?
Well, I I don't know. That's my question here. I mean, do we want to talk about and see?
No, by all means, let's talk.
Well, I mean, I think I, I think you have to on.
I think there are people in the community who would actually be very interested and willing to fund that, perhaps.
I I think one of the things that, you know, even when when Betty was going through this, you know, I I don't think the support was where, you know, probably could or should have been. You know, maybe now, you know, this, thanks to me, maybe now this is the time to really get people into it.
She was trying to get private individuals to re-resurrect, to to actually stand up the stones.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's a a big need, but I Betty deserves a ton of credit because that Morris crypt was falling to pieces and she did,
Do cement work and everything else. Yeah.
she got everything done there. I mean, that that's, and it looks amazing.
She put a fence together?
Yeah, yeah.
She did, yeah. And there's a a new fence on and it's completely restored, so. And that actually created the boulder issue because that's why the boulders were put there originally because there were cars parking on top of it.
To protect it.
And now we have cars.
Not in start.
On top of the crypt, you know what I'm saying?
The crypt is at grade level on the top and then drops down and the cars were parking on top of it.
It's a strong crypt.
You know, to me, the word desecration is is a little overblown. Uh, you know, it's not like you are streaking across the across the graveyard and and spray painting these um, these these headstones, you know, I mean, it it's really creating a phony scandal, especially since we don't even know the real parameters of the actual graveyard. Once we actually know the the parameters, then, yes, you plop something down on top of a dead person, then you are, you have, you have screwed up.
That's exactly what happened.
That's what happened.
You had the plot stones right there.
Plot stones right there?
The headstone mounts there, exposed.
Exposed, but on the other side of, they weren't parking on it.
It was exposed.
So they weren't parking on it.
Well, I mean.
So, but you know what? You guys, you know, we're all human. So you make a mistake, you fix it. Thank you for, and I and I think that your be
Yeah, it's.
your intent to find parking for a congested neighborhood is a, is a file, so.
Yeah, from from this residence, you're forgiven anyway.
Oh, thank you. And and again, I mean, I do s- I I do know that there may be some other options for for a better designed
So.
um, and and better way to look at the parking rather than I had an idea and let it fly, you know, um. I did the same thing with diagonal parking.
At least you just didn't install that.
Apparently nobody thinks of parking the same way I do, but uh.
Did the next best thing.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make you come to park.
No, I I I'm done with parking. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Unless you need an advertisement, then you have our phone.
I would just comment, so the the lesson from the day is better communication.
Ah, you doesn't, I mean, you draw any conclusion you want. There's a lot of lessons here. Uh, but you know, look, we're 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 doing the right thing and moving forward and we're creating um a bigger direction in in in, you know, recognizing not just the mistake I made, but the fact that, I mean, you know, the school doesn't do well taking care of the cemetery. You know, we're just not, you know, we're not taking very good care of the cemetery.
Well, that's a point. I wanna thank you for taking credit. I'll actually rephrase that. Not the credit, but the responsibility.
Thank you.
Too many people take credit for things, they don't take responsibility.
Yeah. Well, I did both. I took credit cuz I made parking. Unfortunately, but no, it it's, but you know, that's what you're supposed to do, so, yes.
Just a clarification. Do the village understand that this is, am I understanding this correctly? This is a town property within the village limits? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And if so,
Yeah.
who's responsible for a town property?
Not the case, the town.
In a, in a village's limit. Is it the village or the town?
The town.
Well, I mean, uh, here's what's ironic is is it's it is it's a village road.
Yeah, but it's not the village either.
Village road, but the cemetery is itself a town property.
Not all, well, it's just about. Right. Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Just like the town hall property is a a parcel within Nelsonville and Cold Spring.
Yeah, so it's kinda, you know, it's it's just that.
So it's very much the town's responsibility.
Yes.
I'll call and have them move the boulders then even. Um, so I mean, obviously, this is our, uh, that's it, it's all new business, so uh, public comment, if there's any last. Yes, sir?
Uh, is there any update on the Furnace Street work?
I I spoke to Bruce and, um, you know, him and I are extremely frustrated with CHA. What did it, and again, I'm just merely speculating. What 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 we feel that's going on is they're just, you know, kinda wasting away the um, the grant money by, um, the last we had heard, it was a, it was a fight between them and DOT. And, um, you know, we had sent a nasty gram to both and DOT um responded rather quickly. Um, CHA said they were gonna follow up based on that and, you know, uh, they have not. And I'll 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 check in with Bruce again tomorrow.
Is there someone um specific at DOT that Bruce can, you know, follow up with who's working on that with CHA or that you are working?
I. Yes, Bruce, absolutely. And and to be honest, I really do believe that the DOT stepped up and did their part.
Yeah.
So I believe it's CHA's, excuse me, uh, it's it's in their court again. So that's not gone or forgotten. Um, and of course, unfortunately for us, there's going to be a final that we're all gonna have to look at and make a decision on and so, but it's, yes, it's still, it's not gone. And, um, but it's it's in CHA's um hands, hands.
There's a um D nine enter sign that's now off the poll. It seems to come up old periodically at uh the Wall Street and the Furnace Street.
Mm-hmm.
And and I would like to make the suggestion that, um, um, even before we finally get to some kind of conclusion that we perhaps add more signage there or something, improve the signage. Because, um, especially during the tourist tourist season, we get a lot of traffic coming down the wrong way. One weekend, I stopped fourteen cars myself, so.
Coming straight down the hill.
Yeah. Sometimes lots of people.
It was an eighteen wheeler.
I don't remember if he was. It wasn't you. That that might have happened.
It was an eighteen wheeler sitting at the corner of like Marion Wall Rock first, just like waiting for rescue. He didn't.
They had a bus.
He just sat there. He didn't know where to go or what to do because he clearly realized he had gone.
The bus went down Wall Street. They they usually end up going down Furnace Street through.
The tow truck, you know, it stops there periodically.
Yeah, and they had to get a tow truck. The road was closed for like uh. What else?
Yeah, Ralph.
Yes, sir?
Um, I'm sorry to revisit things that I've already brought up with you guys. But I was watching the HTRB video of the uh, the initial design of the uh, of the Butterfield buildings and 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 they really do look, to me, really, really big. Um, and so this is, this prompts me to revisit the thing that I said last week. Um, and I actually never, I asked you guys some questions and I actually never, I guess, waited for the response. But it does make me think that other residents are gonna be wondering at this point. Ralph, did did you, were you under the same impression as Catherine was? That, quote unquote, anything could be done in site plan review? Was that your, was that your feeling about the law?
Um, my feeling was that, um, the law was as it was written. And anything is up for discussion, excuse me, up for discussion during site plan review. Meaning they can negotiate anything they wanted to, but there was no legal requirement for him, um, the the developer, if the planning board said it's just too big. So that that was, that's how I I understood it.
Huh. And and Catherine, if I may ask you, by the way, your hair looks very nice. Um, did you, um, did you? Uh, yeah, put that in the record, please. Um, where where did you get the information that anything could be done in site plan review?
I didn't think anything could be done. I thought there was a certain amount of shrinkage and I believe it is twelve, twelve percent smaller. Which I believe. Anyway, um, so I didn't think anything could be done. I mean, uh, the way that the planning board's hands were tied, you know, they couldn't couldn't go up. So, I mean, it could shrink a little bit. It couldn't get any bigger. That's how I understood it.
Cuz that's not what you said, cuz.
Well, I mean, I don't, I would have to see where I was in the context of things. Um, you know, and frankly, I say a lot of things up here that, you know, as a new kid on the block, maybe I sound worse than I actually think, but.
But that that actually makes me wonder, Michael, you guys campaigned together, you sit together up here, um, you were.
But we're very independent people.
Yes, but but still, you you were.
Which you like to ignore and try to tie us to certain individuals in the community, which is kind of ridiculous, but anyway.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm I'm asking you a very, a very specific.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, if you are sitting right next to Catherine when she was saying these things, why didn't you pipe up and say, well, actually, that's not true?
Cuz I'm a, she's an independent woman and I'm not her keeper.
But you knew it not to be true.
When did I say it? Yeah, yeah. Do you remember?
Yeah, well, you said it once.
Is it was at the firehouse?
No, no, you said it once at the Phillips Sound Candidates Debate and you said something that was very similar after the public hearing, right before you voted, I believe. It was right here in this room. So you 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 actually said similar things twice.
Okay, because I remember at the firehouse, I was corrected by trustee Hawkins about, um, going back to the the concept plan coming back to us instead of, you know, after the site plan. So I had already been corrected on that.
I mean, frankly, I'm shocked that you were so confused about this when you were so close to the former trustee whose campaign you ran, who actually
I did run it anyway.
actually designed the site plan that was attached to B four A. This has been out in the open for two years.
So how come for, how come?
Are you speaking of me? I mean, I didn't design any, it's first of all, there's a site plan, it's a concept plan.
Yeah.
It's important to understand the distinction.
It's a concept plan tied to the B four A, yeah.
Correct.
And and also, why are you asking me why? I'm so confused.
I was just curious because.
There were four, there were four planning board members that did not know what their purview was.
He's got the.
That report, I guess, you're giving next week, right?
Yeah, I I mean, I I think it, I appreciate it, I was gonna, I just, I this isn't gonna go anywhere.
I mean, we're, I'm sorry, we're just. No, I know, but I just wanna know, do you think these planning board members were just stupid? I mean, they're not. And it seems, it seems like you must be accusing them of just being like, you know, vapid.
Did 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 he just, did he watch that?
I I feel like we're being accused of being stupid on a weekly basis and it's it's disheartening to say these.
I would say, I don't, I think you're a very intelligent guy. I never said you were stupid.
From what you write in the paper, it's it's hard to tell.
Either way, this is, uh, is there any other comment? I it's just, it's not gonna help to to to, yes, sir?
Ralph, I'd just like to thank you for what you did with the cemetery and how you handled it. I thought it was very professional. Uh, I personally don't think you need to fall on your sword. I mean, I think people that engage in doing good work, we should allow them to make mistakes. I don't like the way it was handled. I frankly find it disingenuous for, you know, trustee Bowman to protect these graves, but not wanna know about any other graves. Um, and but what what I'm more concerned about is that you don't change your behavior based on, you know, uh, on the way this was all handled, on this, you know, protest without protests, there's, you know, desecration without any intent. I mean, I would hope that you keep being who you are and try to fix the problem.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
Thanks.
I do my best. I was one of the original members on the cemetery committee from Nelsonville when that was formed, so I care a great deal about those cemeteries.
I do, and I'm being completely honest. It seems disingenuous to say, but I don't wanna know about anything else beyond this, you know, these boulders that Ralph put, right?
But always scan away.
Quick question. The um, letter that everybody was talking about, it's not by Anna Georgia. I read it today. There are, there are a lot of different people involved in creating the B four A. From what I I read, it actually restricts the planning board's ability to do certain things. Um, I don't know if that's true. That's how I read it. Now, is this board going to address that letter in its entirety in the future?
What do you mean?
The six-page letter, signed by Anna Georgia,
Yeah. Right.
outlines everything that that's occurred in the village.
Well, it it outlines the the attorney's perspective of the process, yes.
I would think it's more than perspective. They have to keep a very diligent record. I'm sure Miss Magory keeps a very diligent record, what he does.
Yeah. Right, and and that is his perspective. And and to your, to your question, were you asking, is it true that this planning board's hands are tied? So, are you?
I'm not asking if it's true. I mean, I understand it that way.
Oh. Yeah.
The letter itself, is this board planning on addressing it? There's a lot of controversy around it. I'm just wondering if, is any discussion?
Well, we we actually, we we discussed it. There was kind of a back and forth last week about it. Um, and uh, it was.
I can only watch ten minutes of that shabaco, so I.
Well, you know, do it ten minutes at a time and get through it and anyway, um.
There's not enough Xanax in the world to watch that.
I think that when we, when we hear from Ralph about his conversations with the planning board members, um, you know, we'll we'll take it up again. I I don't know how 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 detailed a of an invite, like a of
It's a question.
Analysis of the letter.
Right, people are talking about four board members didn't know what they were talking about. Of the four board members, I'm I'm assuming you're also talking about the chair. So that means he didn't know what he was talking about.
No, 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 the the chair is is interestingly, the the chair is the only person
Clarity.
who who appeared in in at that meeting to to understand. Um, and his, you know, the our our neighbors, his volunteer, you know, the volunteers who worked with him, the other members, did not. They were, they were quite surprised, but he he was not.
I mean, I I haven't heard other than the discussions that have gone on. I would love to see if if they would be willing to do it. To actually just voice their opinion publicly. I I hate to put in that position.
They gave quotes to the newspaper.
I haven't read it.
Well.
Yeah, well, they they did. And and I I share your view. I mean, I would like to have, I would like to have have a conversation with them because I.
There's also videotape of the meeting.
That that you would not need Xanax for, actually. That was quite a live interview.
That you should watch.
To to your question, I I I also would like to to talk to them and understand why they were so surprised and, um, because it was a long process. I mean, it's a process that we've all participated in and sort of one way or another. And they were very detailed in their work when they, you know, undertook the secret review um, of the B four A zoning. And so for them to be surprised was surprising to me, um, so.
If you take them at their word, they kept saying, I was told, I was told.
Yeah.
If if you take them at their word, there is no question as to why they're surprised. The question is whether or not you accept their word.
Well, and I do accept their word.
I I appreciate that. Thank you.
With that, entertaining motion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.